Good evening, everyone. Welcome to our August meeting of the August 5 meeting of our Tiverton Planning Board. Let's begin with roll call. Janice Gomes.
President.
Richard Taylor.
President.
Rosemary Eva.
President.
Stuart Hardy.
Present.
BA Lopes is not here this evening. Cheryl Valentine.
Here.
Alan Myers.
President.
Also joining us this evening, we have Todd Romano, our Assistant Solicitor and Planning Board Counsel, Ashley Sweet, our interim Administrative Officer and Consulting Planner from Weston &amp; Sampson, and Ed Rotella, our Land Use Clerk. Before we get going, I'd like to welcome Mr. Alan Myers, who is a new addition to the Planning Board, also being joined by Adam Reposa. I'm not too sure if Adam's going to be able to join us this evening. Just a programming note, Mr. Myers and Mr. Reposa have not been officially sworn in yet, so they cannot participate in any votes, but they will participate in the meeting, hear things out, but again, will not participate in any votes until they get sworn in. Will be in place for next meeting. With that, can everyone here okay? The AV, are we good? Okay. So with that, we're going to move to our agenda here. So items 1, 2, and 3 in our agenda, we're going to have to basically, for all intensive purposes, move to the September meeting here. So item number 1, in terms of the Comprehensive Community Plan Amendments, it's important to note that we had an issue with public notice, and so that public hearing that was tied to Agenda Item Number 1 will be re-advertized and re-noticed for our September 9, 2025 meeting. So this is technically not a continuance since notice was not properly given, and so therefore, we cannot open the public meeting. That is Agenda Item Number 1. Now, in terms of Agenda Item Number 2, which is tied also to the same topic here, I'm going to entertain a motion to continue the public meeting regarding the zoning ordinance amendments for the commercial athletic recreation facility to our September 9, 2025 meeting.
So moved.
I heard Rosemary first. Stu has second. Is there any discussion? Okay, seeing none. All those in favor? All those in favor? All those in favor? It's unanimous. All right. In terms of Agenda Item Number 3, we are going to entertain a motion to continue the public hearing on the Longplex Ice and Golf LLC Major Land Development Master Plan Application to our September 9, 2025 meeting, and extend the time clock to October 10, 2025.
I think we should have a separate motion. Do?
You can do it.
Time clock.
One or as two.
In your book. Yes, what is it? What are we extending the time clock to? Sorry.
October 10, 2025. Correct. Correct.
I'll second.
We have a motion and we have a second. Is there any discussion? Okay, seeing none. All those in favor? Five. It is unanimous. Okay, this brings us to item number 4 on the agenda. This is Sylvester De Silva, 340 Stafford Road, Tiverton, Rhode Island. This is a petition for a minor subdivision, preliminary plan review, and dimensional variances, excuse me, dimensional variance applications, land development and subdivision regulations, Article 6, minor land development or subdivision, and Article 15 Unified Development Review, zoning ordinance, Section 17, dimensional variances. This is a proposed two-lot minor subdivision with variance requested from zoning ordinance, Article 5, Section 1, dimensional regulations. Variance request for Lot 1, where a 200-foot lot width is required, and a 167.4-foot lot width is proposed, translating to 32.6 feet in relief requested. There is also a variance request for Lot 2 of the plan, where a 200-foot lot width is required, and we have a 176.6-foot lot width, which is being proposed, and a 23.4-foot relief being requested. Additionally, a variance is requested from zoning ordinance, Article 5, Section 1, dimensional regulation from the 120,000-square-foot minimum lot size for proposed Lot 1, which is proposed to be 62,179 square feet of suitable land, with a relief requested of 57,821 square feet. This is 340 Stafford Road in Tiverton, Platte 207, Lot 111. It's an R-120 zoning district. And so with that.
Thank you.
Turn over to counsel.
Port Chappelle, on behalf of, thank you, Mr. Grohl. That was, the introductory was perfect. Port Chappelle, on behalf of Sylvester De Silva, I'm here with him and his son, as well as Bill Smith, who you all know as the engineer. Based on what you've just heard, it's simply a minor subdivision on for Unified Development Review because it requires a couple variances, but it really can be characterized this easily. There's eight acres. We're trying to put two house lots on it, and they're a little smaller than necessary when you deal with uplands and buildable land. They are not smaller than your 120,000-square-feet requirements. They are both substantially bigger than that, so they are still meeting all your zoning on size. But Tiverton is relatively unique to some communities, and you not only have a requirement that each lot be 120,000 feet, but you have a requirement that it could be 50 acres, and it needs 120,000 square feet of upland or developable land area. One of the lots, Lot 2, is not only has adequate acreage to meet your 120, but also has the necessary acreage to meet the 120,000 square feet of upland. It's the second lot that meets the requirements for size, but when it comes to upland, is short in that instead of having 120,000 square feet, it has, it's going to require a variance that has 1.4 acres of suitable land. Still a very large 1.4-acre lot of suitable land, but not the 120,000 or close to 2.75 square feet that are required. The only other variances, I will say, is that they're a little thinner. Your lot and your ordinance requires that the lots be 200 feet wide at the front yard setback, and these lots are less than that. They're 176 feet and 167.4 feet, and if you take 200 and subtract the 167.4, that's what gives you that 32.6-foot variance, and if you take 200 and subtract the 176.6, that's what gives you the 23.4. So ultimately, the procedure happens, Todd will tell you, that the first thing is for us to put evidence on regarding the necessity for the variance, and if you so grant the variance, then you'd move to the requirements of the minor subdivision. So with that, I'd introduce Mr. Smith. I'll ask him a couple questions of what we're doing and why, and point out those variances, and we'll move on.
Mr. Smith, raise your right hand, sir. Do you swear or affirm that the testimony you shall give to this board in this matter shall be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth, and that this is your solemn affirmation? Thank you, sir.
Bill, the total acreage is 8.17 acres, and you were tasked merely to try to draw two house lots on 8.17 acres. And if you follow our ordinances, you would first need adequate frontage on Stafford Road for each of these lots, which I believe would be 120 square feet, linear feet. And each of these lots have that, so there'd be no requirement for what we call frontage on a public way. But we also have a second requirement in Tiverton for lot width, and at lot width, we go from the frontage, we then look where the front yard setback would be, and we measure the lots and hope they're 200 feet. And in this particular case, because of the total width of this eight-acre lot, there is not an excess of 400 feet there. Is that right? And there's already a house that's being built on one of these lots, correct?
Right.
And we then located lot lines and located the house, so no setback variances would be required, no relief would be required as to that house, including where we're asking to draw the new line. Is that right?
That's correct.
But where we're drawing the new line, instead of being 200 feet for Lot 1, is only 167.4 feet. Is that right? And is 167 feet inadequate width to put that house in without requiring any side yard setback variances?
Absolutely.
And in fact, that house is up and will not require those variances. Is that right?
Right.
Not that it's all that relevant, but we all know that back in June 24, June of '24, the council changed the zoning from 80, R-80 to 120. Is that right? In this case, R-60 to 120. And when this was all in its design stage at R-60, everything that was being done was done as a matter of right, except perhaps a lot width issue. Is that right? We still had one. One. But unfortunately, even though the original application was filed prior, it wasn't certified till afterwards. We're under the 120, and now we're here asking for what we hope everyone considers is a reasonable variance necessary under the circumstances. Is that right?
Correct.
All right. And besides identifying the variances, are you able to draw two lots without a variance under the new rules and regulations?
Yeah.
Are these the minimum variances you could require in drawing two lots?
Correct.
Now, these variances aren't caused by anything that we did or Mr. Sylvester did to the property. These were the boundaries when he received it. Is that right? And the unique characteristics of the lot are just that all the dry land tends to be up by Stafford Road, and the width is such that it's.
Stafford is here, the house is here. The wetlands are in the east portion of the lot.
And it's angled on Stafford, so there's actually more frontage than lot width due to the geometry of the lot. Is that right?
Correct.
All right. And the hardship is not the result of any prior action of the applicant that you know of? It's not due to economic problems or abilities. It's just trying to get a lot here. An extra lot on eight acres of land requires this action. Is that right? It won't alter the general characteristic of the area. Can you describe the area?
The area is 23 acres, 25 acres, less than one acre. You have larger tract of land.
So whether or not it has the same, has the upland amount of 120,000 square feet, looking from a tax assessor or driving around, this is my lot, this is your lot, these lots are still going to be bigger than the surrounding area, and therefore, they're not going to create a situation where they don't fit in the area and will stand out as the substandard. They'll still actually look bigger than the average. Is that right?
Correct.
In fact, we discussed today, there's an argument under some new legislation that might, however, we're going to calculate those, not today, that these may, that they may be as a matter of right. Right? Now, the final standard is to deny the relief. This is the least or minimal request. There would be more than a mere inconvenience to deny this relief. If we don't get relief, we can't subdivide. We'd need to either do something under another portion of an ordinance, whether it's low-to-moderate income housing or some ink that's not dry and go back to a drawing board, but this seems to be to meet the requirements and needs of our client, and is the minimal amount necessary to keep it in as close to in line with our ordinance as possible. Is that right? You want me to proceed? That's all I would have on the variances. Do you want to vote on the variances and do the minor subdivision second, or do you want to do it together? I know we do it differently in different towns.
I think that's appropriate. Go ahead with the subdivision. That's an application. I'm assuming that everything, you know what it's doing.
Assuming the variance.
I'd like to bring something to your attention, Mr. Chappelle. I don't know who did this in the package. We have a revised document here of June 16, and it references an administrative subdivision plan. I'd like to see that corrected to be minor subdivision for the record, our package.
I agree with that. Assuming that the variance were granted, you would then have the standards that we find in the minor subdivision, and it is less than nine lots, so it's a minor subdivision. Is that correct? Now, one is that it's consistent with the comprehensive plan. We are dividing an eight-acre residential lot into lots that are as big as allowed in this zone merely with the width requirement and with the upland requirement, but they're being used exclusively for residential. Do you have an opinion whether they're consistent with the comprehensive plan?
They are.
And the second question is that the development is in compliance with the standards and provisions of the town zoning ordinance. Well, one of those ordinances is, of course, the ability to make reasonable dimensional variances, and if the variances are granted, then it is in fact in compliance as a residential use in a residential area on a lot that would allow building without any further relief other than the minimal relief requested. Is that right? There'll be no significant negative environmental impacts from the proposed development. Again, one of the houses is already there. The second house is an upland area. You've done soil tests which show that we have PERC and water table tests that will support an OWTS, which is a condition precedent to final approval.
So we have, we've got these, we've got these, we've got these outside their jurisdictions and we've got these, but we got checked off of environmental.
In Ms. Sweet's report, there was a statement that she wasn't sure how many bedrooms that the new house would be. The OWTS submission was for a four-bedroom system. Is that correct?
That's correct. The DEM standard is three-bedroom. Correct. We have more than that.
Is that on both lots?
At this point. The house is a good.
Right. So it's only the whatever, you have two. That's where you have.
Bill, do we have copies of the reports?
Now, have you looked at the land as far as surface water runoff and drainage and determined whether the development of these two houses as contemplated driveways are going to cause any environmental impacts or surface water runoff issues for any neighbors?
So land pitches pretty much, from the west to the east, towards the left. What we're going to do here, the houses, the driveways, we're going to capture, but require one in the front, all of them, and the surface, and that's around. Runoff property. We have one. There's additional water on the state highway. Again, everything, pretty much pitches towards the east.
And are sightlines by the curb cuts in areas on straightaways that are going to not create traffic problems with people?
More than that, it's a site distance.
So based on the traffic, on the cuts and based on the site distances, based on the OWTS-approved systems at DEM when they're done, based on the public water that's available for the site, and based on the topography so that all surface water is self-contained and not leaving a lot, do you have an opinion as to whether or not there'll be a negative impact on the neighborhood or the town in general?
Just to correct that, if there is public water available on the street of the applicant, electing to put his own pipe as well, then that's the intention for the other, the other lots.
But we, okay.
If there's, there'll be no neighbor.
The two lots, we're not going to create lots or parcels with physical constraints to the development of building. They're both going to have access on Stafford, both going to have.
Driveways on Stafford, plenty of room.
There's no rock-out croppings, ledges, or issues where the houses are going, so by drawing these lines, we're not creating any constraints or building problems. In fact, they've been designed so that we have none. Is that right?
That's correct.
And all the proposed land development and all subdivision lots have adequate and permanent physical access to a public street?
Absolutely.
Anything you want to add about the petition?
If you try to shut off all the boxes, what we need to present before, if we've done that, I can't see that.
So you believe it not only meets the standards for a dimensional variances where requested, but also to proceed with a minor subdivision into two lots? Is that right? That's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you. At this point in time, we're going to open up the public hearing for anyone who'd like to come up and speak or ask questions on the matter. Is there any public comment? Sir, if you'd like to come up? We need you to speak into the mic, though, for the record, for the meeting.
I think that one's on, right?
Just have a general question for the town.
Sir, could you just, your name and address, please, for the record?
I think, why don't you just shut it off?
Al Miranda, Captain Circle. I have just a general question for the town. I believe that the town administrations of prior years have spent a lot of time and effort into developing the zoning ordinances of the town and all the other rules and regulations of the town, and it seems like when the new administrations throw all that away and they just take variances to all these existing ordinances, just because people come in and want to develop the town, and I'm wondering why they do that?
Could you be a little bit more? I think in order to give a proper answer, we need a little bit more specificity as to an example of a particular ordinance that you're troubled by.
All these zoning ordinances.
And there's a lot of those.
And other lots, laws of the town. They're always changing them. And they spent thousands of hours, prior administrations, developing these ordinances for a reason. They don't want a big town. They don't want it to be New York City. So developers come in, or the state comes in and says, you have to do this, this, and this. What happens to the town ordinances that were already developed?
Sure.
And it seems like the new administrators, administrations, just go along and change those things. Why don't the developers just build for the existing regulations?
Let me, so I think your question, sir, is what I would refer to as sort of broad-scope, 100,000-foot, really big picture. Do you have any particular, what we're talking about here is a minor subdivision, pre-standard fair in terms of this particular lot. Do you have any comment or question as it relates to this particular application?
Oh, this particular application is just like all the others. They're here to get variances on those ordinances.
Sure.
Why don't they just meet the current?
Yeah. The Constitution provides property owners an opportunity to subdivide their property if they meet certain standards. That's why they're allowed to come here. We have standards set by the state general laws as well as the town ordinances to comply with those. If they meet those standards and they are held to their proof, then they are allotted their variance or special use permit.
They're not meeting the standards of the town.
You haven't proven that, sir. What evidence do you have? What element have they not satisfied?
They want to vary the ordinances. They need, they need variances on the ordinances.
And Mr. Chappelle went through the, went through the standards for variance, and then he went through the standards for a minor subdivision. Is there a specific element of one of those that he has not satisfied to your satisfaction?
All I'm saying is that the town can put a halt on variances, period.
No, we can't. We can't. I just told you, Mr. Miranda. They have a constitutional right to request a variance. They have requested the variance. They have standards in place which are applied uniformly.
For minor variances, that's, that's acceptable, should be acceptable, but for major variances, which causes the town to look like New York City, shouldn't be allowed.
But that's, your concern is greater. Here, this, your concern is much more big picture, and I can appreciate that.
It's going to be a big picture. Right. Thank you.
All righty. Any other public comment? Any other public comment? Any other public comment? All right. We're going to close the public here. We'll open it up to the board for discussion. Rosemary, you have a point.
I do. Do we have copies of the reports, Bill, that you said you've got, got for this, the curb cut, the wetlands, everything else that you've done with the state?
I believe those were submitted with.
I'm sorry?
I believe those were submitted with.
I don't have them.
I don't, I don't believe we got a copy. I don't know.
We don't, we don't get, we just got these things, too. Could you make sure that?
I'm, I'm down there. We have those persons, and I will get.
I'm sure you do.
The application was certified complete, so the checklist items are provided in the file. We can make sure that if you didn't get a copy of something, that that gets distributed to you, but we, it's a complete application.
I'm from Missouri. I like to see things as we have done in the past.
We'll make it a condition of the first thing here.
Just make sure that they are.
I can also.
This one, I can see them. I've been by it and have no problem.
There were two draft conditions of approval, if you were to grant the variances, that obviously we concur with and have no problem as being part of any motion. The first is that all federal, state, and local permits be obtained prior to submitting the final plan for approval, and copies of such shall be included in the final plan submission. And the second is that site plans reflecting the zoning district as being within the R-60 zone area needed to be corrected to the 120, and both of those recommendations are acceptable to the applicant.
So I would add a third condition, and I, Rosemary, I need the title of the document that you were referring to that references an administrative subdivision. Okay. So that would also be another condition, is that the document that's submitted that's part of the record that's titled.
The final.
Subject: Planning Board Unified Review for Variants Lot Width and Lot Area, Sylvester De Silva, Platte 207, Lot 111, 340 Stafford Road, Tiverton, Rhode Island, will be corrected to reflect a minor subdivision.
Do we have any comments from our engineer or a DPW director?
I don't see the DPW director. Actually, I see the DPW director in attendance here. And it was a minor subdivision, which, or the variances being requested, would have been administratively granted. Right. So no.
Without the road.
Stu, did you have a comment or question?
I was just going to ask you what you think we're ready for now.
Yeah, I, are, sure, go ahead.
The stone walls, are any of those going to be altered or changed? Looks like both of these lots are subdivided almost in the middle of.
There is a pit of a wall across the front. We'll have to break that, we could break the driveway, but if that was not disturbed.
Okay. Anything else? Can we move to a vote?
So this is a fairly straightforward, simple reminder to subdivision. Marcellous, I was. size is quite large, so there's plenty of room for another. So I would like to make actually two motions. I think the first motion would be to approve the variances. And so my motion is to provide, I believe, 32.6 feet in width on Lot 1, to provide 23.4 feet of relief on Lot 2, and to provide, I'm, a minimum of square foot for Lot 1 of 57,821 square feet, which is smaller than the 120,000 square feet, which is required.
I believe the 57,821 is the relief requested.
Is that, is that the relief that's requested?
Yes.
Okay, that's fine. So that means you have actually more than.
1.32 acres of actual.
Okay, thank you, thank you. I will amend my, my motion to reflect that 57,821 square feet is the amount of relief that's needed. So.
For suitable lot area.
Suitable lot area.
I can do the math quick for you if you want.
No, no, no. Good. Is there a second? Cheryl has seconded. Any other board discussion on the variance vote?
We'll do that.
Well, there's findings for both. There's findings for the variance and variances, and then you have findings for the subdivision.
Okay, I would amend my motion to include the findings that Ashley provided in her, her memo dated July 31, 2025, findings for the granting of.
We have an amended motion. Do we have a second to that? Dennis has seconded. Any other discussion by the board?
I'm going to ask, Cheryl, do you want to second that? No, because you did the original motion. So do you want to second that, please? Thank you.
Cheryl has seconded. Any other discussion? All right, all those in favor?
It's just the variances.
That's just the variance.
So now we're going on to, to the subdivision itself, and we do have some, some conditions to put on that. So I would make a motion to approve, to approve the two lot minor subdivision with the conditions that all federal and state permits be provided, that, that the hypo that refers to a 60, an R-60 zone be corrected to the due zone, zone, it was the 120,000 square feet. And then the third condition is, is the condition that Rosemary found a typo in the minor subdivision description provided by the applicant. It calls this minor subdivision an administrative subdivision. So those would be the three exceptions.
Based on the facts and rationale in the memorandum?
Yes, based on the facts and rationale in the memorandum, and also including the findings in the memorandum that Ashley provided and that Ashley would first make a decision. So there will be my motion.
Okay. We have a motion. Do we have a second? Cheryl will second. Any other board discussion? All right, seeing none, all those in favor.
Do you want the variance reference?
I believe that's two of them.
It'll be in the decision, but I, I think it, I would like you to do that.
Ashley, do we need to put anything on, on a request to allow you to grant the final administratively?
It's by statute.
By statute, no.
Okay. All those, any, any other discussion or questions?
Yes, I do. We just received the, a copy of the certificate of completeness, and there are five items noted at the end. I think they should be incorporated as well.
What are those items, please?
We just got them tonight.
Yeah, so we, some of those we.
Some you've covered.
Some of those we already have. The certificate was written and they've been provided. So I would say that the only thing that would be left would be the building zoning letter. So that would be checklist item number 37, determination letter from the building zoning prior to the preliminary plan approval provided by the administrative officer. So I would say that would be the only thing that you would add as a condition.
So, so should we amend the motion to add that, what Ashley just described as a condition? And that would be a letter from the building zoning department?
Correct.
How about the one from the Director of Public Works?
There is no street.
Okay.
And the zoning letter says that houses are allowed in-house spots.
Okay. I just got it tonight.
Fine, it's.
Okay. Cheryl, do you want to second that amended motion? Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any other board discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Thank you very much. Thank you, everyone. I appreciate your time.
All right. We're going to move on to agenda item number five. Owner applicant is Kevin and Sonia Lombardi. This is a minor subdivision preliminary plan review and dimensional variances, sort of similar to what we were just going through here. This is a proposed two lot minor subdivision with a variance requested from zoning ordinance Article 5, Section 1, dimensional regulations. The variance request is from the 120,000 square foot minimum lot size for proposed Lot 1, which is proposed to be 81,934 square feet, resulting in 38,066 square feet of relief required. Additionally, a variance, a second variance is requested from Article 9, Section 23, dash 45A, 5 general procedures required. Findings, request for relief for proposed Lot 1 to allow use of a 30-foot wide common driveway easement to access the two proposed lots. Location is Zero Lake Road in Tiverton, Plat 609, Lot 107, west side of Lake Road, the NAR 120 zoning district.
Counsel. Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Jay Lynch from the Law Room of Moore, Vergadamo, and Lynch, on behalf of the Lombardis. Mr. Smith is also the engineer on the project. This is a similar application to what you just went over. This is going to be a two lot subdivision on one lot, which is approximately 17,000 acres. We're creating a two lot subdivision. We are going to request a variance for Lot Number 1 for the suitable land area. Lot Number 2 has sufficient suitable land area, so we don't need any relief for that, that lot. There's also, we're asking for a waiver from the subdivision regulations for one access point servicing the two parcels. And Mr. Smith will go over why that's necessary. It's a requirement of DEM, wanted to limit travel through the wetlands area adjacent to, to the roadway. I know Mr. Smith has submitted, did submit a report back on June 11, where he outlined the criteria for the dimensional variance. I can have him go over it again if you'd like, but he does spell it out in his written report that this application does meet the criteria for dimensional relief. We'll have Mr. Smith as well go through the criteria for subdivision approval. So, Mr. Smith, if you can just walk through the, the site.
Thank you. Mr. Smith, do you swear or affirm that the testimony you shall give to this board in this matter shall be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth, and that this is your solemn affirmation?
I do.
Thank you, sir.
Mr. Smith, if you can just generally go through this, the subject site, and point out the, the issues and the hardships that the applicants are facing, particularly with respect to wetlands on the site.
So just, just for everyone's orientation, on the west side of Lake Road, Interway subdivision that the board approved, five, five years ago or so, is just to the, a few lots to the north of it. It's surrounded by large tracks and small tracks. I think the smallest lot around it is 0.8 acres, and it ranges up to our, our lot being 18-plus acres. The existing conditions. So Lake Road is here. There's a wetland pocket up in the front, right along the roadway. There's an upland piece in the middle, and then there's another wetland pocket, and then it rises up, and it actually ties into the town of Tiverton's Weetamo Woods. What's being proposed, we've gone to DEM, and we've gotten permission to do a wetland crossing, and the driveway is in now. So that, that part has been approved. We've gone back to DEM again, asking for a two lot development of that, that first upland space that's on the property. So we'll come in the existing driveway, where it's already crossed the wetlands, going to have a house and a second house, and then the remainder of the land will be undeveloped. The back upland portion, which actually is, my opinion, the nicest part of the property, will, will not be developed. Okay? Essentially, that's, that's the project in a nutshell, and the restrictions that we're fighting. DEM was, would be reluctant and probably would say no if we asked for a second wetland crossing to access the second house. So that's, that's why we're going to use a shared, shared driveway to come in, so that we don't disturb any more of the wetlands that already has been.
And, Mr. Smith, did DEM express any opinion as to whether or not, you know, crossing the, the second wetland further upland, whether they would approve of any?
They said no. Originally, we went back to them to try and develop a house site further to, to the west, then they said, we'll give you one wetland crossing, but we're not going to give you two. That's, that's, that's kind of how we've gotten to this point.
And, Mr. Smith, you submitted a written report to the board outlining your opinion on whether or not the applicants met the criteria for the dimensional relief?
Correct.
And do you, in your opinion, does that, does this application meet that criteria?
Yes, it does. Certainly not a hardship that the applicants imposed. The wetlands were created by Mother Nature many years ago. They're just trying to be able to work around them. We're asking for two, two house slots on seven acres.
And this is not going to change, alter the character of the, the neighborhood or the area?
Not at all. The houses will actually be set back quite a ways from the roadway, so that there's going to be very little site imposition to any, anybody going up and down Lake Road.
And if, if the board denies the variance for Lot Number 1 for suitable land area, would the, the applicant suffer more than a mere inconvenience?
Yes, he would.
Now, just going through the criteria for the minor subdivision, do you believe that this proposal is consistent with the town's comprehensive plan?
I do.
And assuming that the board grants the dimensional relief that we're seeking, will this development be in compliance with the standards and provisions of the town zoning ordinance?
Provided we get the relief, yes.
And will there be any, any negative environmental impacts as a result of this subdivision?
Well, again, we've gone to DEM freshwater wetlands, gotten permission for the two, the two lots and the two dwellings that are proposed. We've respected their request not to alter that second wetland. The wetland comes in off the street. It's already been altered under their permits. We're not asking for a second driveway, which would eliminate the need for the non-accessible frontage. So I say that we're, we, yes, environmentally, we're not going to have a negative.
Okay. And this proposed subdivision is not going to create any constraints in development?
Single-family houses, yeah. Septic systems have been approved, and the wetlands have been approved. So it's, it's standard development.
So the one, the one waiver that you're looking for, though, is permanent access for the second lot over from?
That's, that's correct. That's driven by the presence of the wetlands there.
And DEM's restrictions and limitations?
Yes.
I don't have any more questions for Mr. Smith. I did want to jump ahead, though, and, and deal with one of the proposed conditions for approval. I know on condition number two, there was a condition number two, that there be no further subdivision of the resulting two lots, proposed Lot 1 and 2. I would request the board to change that condition and put it, impose a condition that Lot Number 2 will not be further subdivided to create an additional buildable lot. The applicants want to reserve the right to perhaps do an administrative subdivision with the town for that back acreage. So we would not create an additional lot, but they can subdivide that additional parcel, and it would then be joined to an adjacent property. So we are in agreement that we're not going to create more than two buildable lots on this site, but I would just ask for that consideration on the condition that there be no further subdivision.
And that's for Lot 1 or Lot 2?
That would be Lot 2. Lot 2 would be the only lot that would be capable of being subdivided again. So it would be for Lot Number 2, that we would reserve the right for an administrative subdivision if positive.
Yeah, so I would just recommend that you just add the language to that condition that says other than for an administrative subdivision. That's always come up, that it's a good point, that technically an administrative subdivision is a subdivision. You don't want to preclude the applicant from moving lot lines if it's necessitated.
Thank you. I don't have any further testimony for the board, unless the board has any questions?
What's that?
I have a question to those, right?
I'm just, okay, counsel, are you done?
Yes.
Okay. This is also a public, this is also a public hearing, so we're going to open it up before the board deliberates here. So does anyone from the public have any comments or question? Any public comments or questions? Any public comments or questions? All right, seeing none, we will close the public hearing and open it up to board discussion. Rosemary?
Yes. What is on the property now? I, I've been up there. I have not been on the property. I looked, the gate was, had a chain on it. It's a gravel. It looks as though it's been cleared.
We can have Mr. Smith.
There's a gravel driveway and a container box that has some, some equipment stored in it.
Okay. This board, as he, Mr. Smith alluded to, had a lot of concerns with Interway to the north of your property. It's extremely wet, as you know, and your culvert looks good, and your gravel looks good up there. But there were some beech trees, and we have the wet, our watershed in the back there. I'm concerned about, Mr. Smith's drawing. On the sheet three shows the dwellings side by side on your site plan.
So we have a dwelling here, and a dwelling over to the north and east of that, approximately 150 feet apart.
Okay, so they will be side by side. It's hard to read this plan.
I'm going to call that side by side.
Well, pretty close.
So, our DEM buffer is this portion in here. So, we've basically kept everything fairly tight in terms of the developable area, so we have less of the woods and the habitat to disturb.
And the buildings are proposed within the building envelope, correct?
Exactly, yes. We're not asking for any relief.
Okay. And they won't be in the watershed?
No, the watershed is. It goes back down, goes way up to west before the watershed.
Memory serves me correctly. We did sidewalks on the other properties, so I was familiar with them, and I like to do my due diligence.
So, what the... I'm sorry, Rosemary, did I?
I'm sorry?
Were you finished?
Go ahead.
I just wanted to say that actually, what you've done with the placement of the buildings is more consistent with conservation development, because what you're doing is you're protecting environmental resources. So, sometimes having buildings a little closer together is a good thing.
And those reports still aren't in the files, right, Ashley?
Which reports?
The reports from our wetlands.
Wetlands and septic are, yeah.
Okay.
And I'll reissue them again just so that we have them, but we did submit those.
It looked good.
Okay. Ashley, is there anything from your memo you'd like to?
Yeah, so I would just say we would amend condition of approval number two to state that other than for an administrative subdivision, essentially preventing the applicant to conduct an administrative subdivision on the property if needed, and then, to Rosemary's point on the last one, add the determination letter from the building and zoning official prior to filing a final plan submission. That's it.
I had one suggestion on the plan. Mr. Smith, could you label the proposed extensions? And this is more for the purpose of the easement that will be drafted. The proposed extension says proposed extension one and two, and I think it's going to help Jay subsequently draft that easement a little clearer as to who has...
For the shared driveway easement?
Correct.
Okay.
You talk about proposed extension one to lot one, and proposed extension two to help you...
So, you're asking for that to be labeled on the site?
Yes. Do you understand why, Jerry?
I do.
So, I would just say make that condition of approval number five, that the access easements will be labeled as?
Proposed extension one.
Proposed extension one and proposed extension two.
Hold on. And the recorded easement will be provided to you prior to final plan?
In reference to the zoning leave-up.
So, is that going to be condition for approval number six?
Yes.
According to the final plan.
Prior to final plan. Yes, that's fine. Recording final plan.
Yeah, we'll submit the easement, then maybe can record it together, so...
Yeah. Just for record-keeping, it would be easier if we said that you're going to give us the easement with your final plan submission. That way, I can send it, he can review it, we can finalize the plans, and then you can bring in the MyLars with the document to record.
I agree. I don't want to record an easement before we have the plan.
I agree. Thank you.
Any other board comments or questions?
Do you, uh... So, we'll do this like we did the other one. We'll do two motions. The first motion will have to do with granting relief required, and in this instance, we have two bits of relief. So, for lot one, the suitable lot area relief would be 38,066 square feet of relief which is required. So, my motion would include that. And then, the second area of relief would be two, would be a waiver of our requirement that would allow the applicant to have a common driveway easement. So, in other words, one driveway would service both lots. So, those are the two areas of relief required. And Ashley has provided findings of fact for unified development review dimensional variance in her memo of July 31, 2025. So, that would also be part of that motion. So, regretting the two areas of relief, and we're citing Ashley's findings, we're unified development review dimensional variance.
We have a motion. Do we have a second?
I'll move.
I had Cheryl in there first. Cheryl seconded. Any other board discussion? This is the vote for the variances only. All right. Seeing none, all those in favor? Unanimous. Do, number two?
So, I would like to make a motion then to actually approve the minor, two-lot minor subdivision at Sierra Lake Road with six conditions. And three of those conditions are already spelled out in Ashley's memo of July 31, 2025. All federal, state, and local permits we have obtained prior to submitting a final plan. Number two, there shall be no further subdivision of the resulting two lots other than for an administrative subdivision. Based on the circumstances that lot one was created, due to issuance of dimensional variance for the required non-suitable area. Condition number three, site plans reflecting the zoning district as being within the R80 zone incorrect and should be updated to show that it is in fact in the R120 zone. The number four condition is a letter from zoning, from building zoning department. Condition number five is that the excess easements for proposed extensions be...
Number five?
Yes. The driveway easements will be labeled on the site plans as proposed extension one and proposed extension two. A number six condition is proposed driveway easement will be provided prior to final plan submission, and the final and seventh condition is zoning ordinance relief will be noted on the final plan for recording.
And I have one note to make on the findings. On number five, I would just change that language, because the applicant testified this evening that they spoke to DEM about the second wetland crossing, and that DEM indicated to them that they would not approve a second wetland crossing. The language underneath that condition speaks to that it's possible that DEM would not grant a wetland crossing. I think you now have information in front of you from the applicant that identifies that DEM told them that they would not. So, I would just say that we should change the language to reflect that the applicant testified that DEM said that they would not approve a second wetland crossing, and then you have a waiver under the land development and subdivision regulations, which you did mention in your first motion, but I'd like you to repeat in this motion, because it's relative to the subdivision.
Okay.
Right, so we... Yes. So, all of those things should be added to my second motion.
Are we clear on that? Okay.
Yes.
We have a motion. Do we have a second? Cheryl has seconded.
Right.
Any further board discussion? All right. Seeing none, all those in favor? It's unanimous.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Have a good evening, everyone.
You too.
Welcome. We're going to move on to agenda item number six. So, this is a recommendation to the town council on amendments to Appendix A zoning ordinance, cat rescue and cat shelter. So, we are proposing adding definitions for both a cat rescue and a cat shelter, as well as making edits to the district use table to add cat rescue and/or cat shelter. And with that addition to the use table, adding proposed performance standards to support that proposed use. I will just say that this is a planning board open public meeting, so it's not a public hearing. We are not required to take commentary, but there is an overwhelming desire to share comments. Take that under consideration, so... Yeah, let's proceed.
Pretty straightforward ordinance amendment brought to you by the zoning ordinance committee. You've had it for a couple of weeks now, I believe. Any questions about the cat rescue or cat shelter, where it's proposed to be allowed, or those uses are proposed to be allowed, or about any of the criteria? No?
I do not. I've read through everything, so I'm comfortable. Do? Okay. Dick, Janice, Rosemary?
As you know, a lot of these standards mirror what's in the general laws, it's at ours, enforcement and inspection standards. Again, pretty straightforward. Do you want to make a public, Mr. Chairman?
Does anybody have any comments, questions, courtesy ground here? All right. Seeing none. I will entertain a motion to add to Article II definitions, the definitions for cat rescue and cat shelter as outlined in our packet, as well as Article IV, Section IV, adding to the district use table, cat rescue and/or cat shelter as put forth in our packet, and then finally, adding to Article VI, other district regulations, performance standards that are proposed for Article VI, Section 10, for cat rescue and/or cat shelter as put forth in our packet.
So moved.
So, we have a motion. Do we have a second? Dick has seconded. Any further board discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor? It's unanimous. Thank you. All right. We will move on to agenda item number seven, which is a public hearing. This is Amanda Souza, 137 Main Road, Tiverton, Rhode Island. Development plan review, preliminary plan application. This is a land development and subdivision regulations, Article 16, development plan review. Basically, this is a proposed change of use to the existing mixed-use structure to include the addition of a 894-square-foot non-public cat rescue shelter. Again, the location is 137 Main Road. That's Platte 101, Lot 137, east side of Main Road. It's a neighborhood zoning district, and the time clock is at 65 days, ending at October 3, 2020.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. My name is Mark Morse. I represent Baja's Rescue, which is an applicant which was initially filed as a use variance subject to a change of the zoning ordinance and which will now be filed as an application under the newly-approved ordinance to allow a cat shelter. With me is Mr. Jock from Stark Architects, who has prepared a report in regards to the use of the building as appropriate for that of a cat shelter. The proposal being presented is an application to turn an existing residential apartment unit into a cat shelter. Mr. Jock has examined the building structure and determined that it meets appropriate criteria to have a cat shelter, and I will let him speak to that. We understand that the proposed use will be consistent with the comprehensive plan established by the town of Tiverton, which promotes the use of small businesses in this area where the cat shelter is to be located, on the northeast side of Main Street, and it will have no significant environmental impact. It's not requiring any significant change of use to the apartment building, and I would have Mr. Jock speak as to the proposed plans for the apartment building and why it would be appropriate as a cat shelter.
Just one second. Amanda, you want to switch seats with him so we can use the microphone, please?
No problem.
If you'd raise your right hand, sir. State your full name.
Rodney. Is this all?
I hope so.
Sounds like it. Okay. Rodney Jocks.
Sir, do you swear or affirm that the testimony you shall give to this board and this matter shall be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth, and that this is your solemn affirmation?
Yes, I do.
Thank you, sir.
Mr. Jocks, did you have occasion to review the proposal for a cat shelter at 137 Main Street in Tiverton, Rhode Island?
Yes. Yes, I did.
And as a result of that review, what considerations did you make in determining whether this would be an appropriate use for a cat shelter?
We prepared a report, Rhode Island Rehabilitation Code summary, which basically states, in our professional opinion, that the existing structure is sufficient, meets current building code, unless there's some, I don't want to say extenuating circumstance, but unless the town has some other extenuating request, I guess, for the existing structure to meet. In our opinion, it appears that the existing structure is sufficient.
And are there any alterations that are required in the building in order to serve as a cat shelter?
The only alterations we're proposing is, I think there's one or two partitions which are not full height. And those partitions are indicated on the plan. It looks like everyone is looking at drawing 3A 1.0. At the top of the drawing there, there's two, looks like two thick, black, solid lines. Those are the proposed partitions.
Thank you. I would have Amanda testify as to her compliance with state DEM regulations in order to qualify as the cat shelter.
Amanda Souza, do you swear or affirm that the testimony you shall give to this board and this matter shall be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth, and that that is your solemn affirmation?
Yes, I do.
Thank you.
So, my name is Amanda Souza. I am the owner and operator of Baja's Cat Cafe at 137 Main Road, and I am proposing the cat rescue, which is in the rear of the building, at 137 Main Road. Now, in order for me to... Now, in order for me to get my rescue license, I would have to have approval from the Town of Tiverton, saying that I comply with all municipal codes and rules and regulations according to the town. So I do have my shelter license. I have my shelter license for the front of the building, and that means that they can come in at any time and regulate the front to see how many cats are in there, make sure everyone's taken care of. We also currently, right now, work with Forever Plus Animal Shelter. We would like to continue that relationship with them. But they are also able to go in there at any time, make sure the cats are healthy, and all of that stuff is kind of met. So if we do get to open up the cat rescue, obviously, we would have to follow all D E M regulations, but I'm not able to do that until I can get this part situated, because I need that piece of paper like I did before when I opened Baja's Cat Cafe, saying that I do comply, I would be compliant with town zoning ordinances. So that's kind of where I am.
And will there be a benefit to the town by your opening a cat rescue?
Yes. So I got two calls alone today from people in the community asking to surrender their cats. We have a great reputation as far as getting cats adopted, taking great care of them. Many of you may know about the incident that happened in December. I was operating a cat rescue without the proper licensing, which is now why I'm here to get the proper licensing. So I was doing that. We were taking cats in, we were getting them adopted. I was working with a veterinarian, which I will still continue to work with. That's Dr. Goyette from Salty Paws Animal, animal stuff, sorry. So I will continue to work with her. During that time when we did have the cat cafe and the rescue, there was no complaints from neighbors, there was no complaints from D E M, there was no complaints from anyone in the town, or any neighbors, or residents, or anything like that. No outbreaks of any, as far as any rabies, or ringworms, or anything like that. So I've been open for almost four years, and I haven't had really anything crazy happen except for I had my shelter license and not my rescue license. So it's something that we're working towards now.
Can you, just because I learned a whole lot about this, but I think that it would benefit the board to understand that there's a difference between a cat rescue and a cat shelter, and that that was the problem with your licensing, was the adopting of the cats, and that's the difference, and so that's what you're remedying now.
Yeah, so legally, I can take cats from Forever Paws Animal Shelter, R A S P C A, like I have been doing, but I cannot currently legally take cats in as a surrender, or Animal Control cannot drop cats off to me legally. I can't take them, get them spayed, neutered, rabies, distemper, F I V, F E L V testing, you know, microchipping, everything that we were doing prior. I'll admit it, whatever, I did what I did. It wasn't, I'm not, I want to help cats. At the end of the day, that's my mission, and that's why I'm almost like 40 grand in debt trying to do this, because I'm passionate about this. And it's important, because I don't, there's nothing for the cats in Tiverton right now. Sorry, I get crazy about cats. I think it comes with the territory, but, but I also want to work with Animal Control and the Town of Tiverton, and I want to be that place that you guys can call when you find a cat, and I don't want to charge the Town of Tiverton for that. So it's cost savings for you guys as well. I want to take those cats, get them rehabilitated, and get them into loving homes. I'm not looking to make a profit. I'm looking to help cats. That's it. Sorry. I'm so passionate about cats, it's crazy.
No worries. Okay. This, are you guys?
I, I think we are, yeah.
Okay, so this is a public hearing. We're going to open the public hearing. Does anyone from the public have any comments or questions? Does anyone from the public have any comments or questions? Final call. Any comments or questions? All right, seeing none, we will close the public hearing.
I want to make sure you understand, we're only making a recommendation to the Town Council on that ordinance, and whatever the board does tonight as to your application, still can't do anything, right?
Until that ordinance is passed.
And do I have to have final plan here? Or through you?
Through me. So, yeah. So you're, one of the conditions of approval of the application is that that zoning ordinance is adopted by the council. Once that's adopted by the council, and you can actually have that use, then you can file a final plan. We give you a decision on that final plan, and you can report that, and then you're good to go.
Okay. Do we come back here again?
You don't have to come back before the board. Final is done administratively now through the law, so it would come back to the Planning Department, but it is an administrative action to file, to do that final.
Okay.
Okay. So to be clear, the vote we're taking tonight is to make a positive recommendation to the Town Council.
You already did that.
On the ordinance.
On the ordinance. Amanda needs that ordinance in place, so your review of her application for the actual rescue has to be conditioned on, which is condition number two in the memo, on the passage of that ordinance. So if that happens, then her preliminary plan is approved, and she can file a final plan and report that.
Got it. So we're voting on the development.
You are.
Okay. Any other board comments or questions?
There's no elevation at all?
It's all flat.
Okay, it's all single level?
Single level, all flat. Yep.
Nobody above here?
Nope. It goes the cafe, and then apartment, and then apartment.
So flush?
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
There's nothing that shows?
No, it's just flat.
Middle, eight-level residential.
Oh, yeah.
More odors?
Actually, we do pretty good with the odors, so I will pat myself on the back for that one.
Thank you.
Any other board? Yeah?
This is so much a staging operation between rescue and adoption, mostly.
Yeah.
Yeah, there's no operatories, there's no veterinarian services offered?
No, but I would love to someday maybe have like spay and neuter, like our rabies clinics or something, maybe.
Yeah, some on the license. Okay, great.
Yeah, I mean, down the road, and more education in the community for stuff like that.
I think it's great.
Oh, thank you.
There we go. Anybody else? All right, I will entertain a motion.
It's going to be a motion to grant preliminary plan approval conditional for the reasons stated in the National's memorandum. Do you understand?
Okay. Anybody like to make that motion? Janice has made it, and Stu has seconded.
Wait, can I just add? We're just going to add one condition of approval, that's the determination letter for the building zoning official prior to a final plan submission.
Janice, would you like to amend?
And based on the reasons.
Would you like to amend your motion based on that and the reasons given in National's We will put the wording in for you. Okay. Stu, would you like to second that amended motion, please?
Yes. Second, second, amended?
Any other comment? All right, all those in favor? It is unanimous.
Thank you, guys, so much. I greatly appreciate it. And thank you, everyone that came out to support. I appreciate that.
We're going to move on to Agenda Item Number Eight. This is Falconeri Construction, who's the applicant. Southport Trust, who's the owner. Major land development and subdivision comprehensive permit application. This is a concept plan review. Concept plan. This is a proposed land development subdivision regulation, Article Seven, major land development zoning ordinance, Article Twenty-One. Basically, we are going to hear a couple of concepts for our, excuse me, possible developments for this particular site. Both projects contemplate various waivers from the land development and subdivision regulations, as well as sort of ordinance. In terms of location, we're talking about 1101, 1155, and 1159 Fish Road. This is Platte 316, lots 103, 104, and 105, the west side of Fish Road. From a zoning perspective, Platte 316, lots 103 and 104 is zone highway commercial. Platte 316, Lot 105 is a split highway commercial in R 40. Time clock is set for 30 days, ending August 8th, 2025. Counselor?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Attorney Matthew Landry from the Office of Bliss and Kavanaugh, on behalf of the applicant, Falconeri Construction. I'm joined by Tony Morrow, project engineer to my rate from StanTech. Mr. Falconeri is also in the audience. You did a great job setting the table for me. This is a very high-level overview, very conceptual overview, given it's just a pre-application. I've been in the habit of doing these because we think input from the town, and staff, and members of this board is crucial to proceeding with the development plan. The purpose tonight is not to obtain any approvals. We're far from a formal project application, and just for the benefit of the public, the purpose of this really is to garner feedback and guidance from the board on the proposed development. So it's very high-level conceptual planning at this stage. There's a lot of engineering that still needs to be done, and obviously, we're aware of that. But we'd like to present two potential concepts for these properties along Fish Road, just south of Route 24. It's a rather large parcel of land. There's three parcels, the largest being Lot 105, which is just shy of 70 acres, I believe. It is a split-zone parcel. The front along Fish Road is highway commercial. The remainder, the majority of the property, Lot 105, is R 40. The two frontage parcels, 103 and 104, will not really be subject to this application. It's the same owner, it was part of the application, but most of the development is proposed for the largest parcel, which is Lot 105. Access would be direct off of Fish Road, over and through some of those frontage parcels, but the majority of the development would take place on the larger parcel. So again, there's really two development proposals. In the, in StanTech's project sheet, there is a yield plan, which shows what would, what the property would yield under traditional subdivision regulations. It's approximately 46, 47 lots. Buildable lot area, or developable lot area that you can use is around 46 acres, so that, you know, limits things a bit. There's some large wetland bodies that have applicable setbacks and buffers. The concepts that you have in front of you, observe those setbacks and assume those setbacks. Obviously, more engineering is needed, but we verify the location of those, and these would comport with any D E M regulations that would apply. The fourth sheet in the plan set is entitled, it just says "Concept Plan," but it's drawing number four. That's option number one that the applicant is considering. It's mostly concentrated in the front portion of Lot 105, across the first water body or wetland body. There would be a wetland crossing there that Tony could speak to a little bit more. It would be five multifamily apartment buildings, approximately four stories high. Each of those buildings would have 51 units apiece, for a total of 255 units. There is well in excess of what parking is required. This would come in as a comprehensive permit application. 25% of the units would be deed restricted to low and moderate income housing for households making between 80 and 120% L M I. That's all subject to state law. A state monitoring agent would be appointed. As you know, there would be a deed restriction in place for at least 30 years that would ensure that these units went to families making between that 80 and 120%. Again, that's subject to state law, and the monitoring agent adjusts the maximum rents or sale prices that you can, you can charge. That will fluctuate significantly by the time, if this were ever to go through and get approved, it would be subject to whatever is in effect at that time. So that's a little bit far out, but when we proceed with the preliminary plan submission, some of those numbers will be a little bit more defined. It would be preceded by a letter of eligibility from Rhode Island Housing that would also determine the feasibility of the project, with the project's construction pro forma, to ensure that the project could be built based on this ratio. The 46 units that could be done under traditional subdivision is a baseline. Under the new state law, there are density bonuses, minimum density bonuses that are allowed under state law. If the project is located on water and sewer, which this project actually is, you're allowed a minimum density bonus of five units per acre, that's usable acre. Tony has calculated that, it's approximately 212 units, which is the bonus that we could get as a minimum under state law. And what we're proposing here is at or just below what would be allowed under those density calculations. There was a recent change in state law that went into effect, I think on July 2nd or 3rd, where wetland buffers are now, no longer have to be excluded from the density calculation for comp permits. I'm not sure it would really change the density calculations that much, but this is based on excluding wetland buffers in accordance with your local zoning regulations. That may be subject to change due to the state law changes. So again, 25% of the units would come out to about 64 deed-restricted units that would contribute to your L M I housing statistics. The project also includes a number of amenities, bowls and courts for community members. This option would require variances or waivers from your local regulations, particularly with multifamily housing, more than one structure on a property, the density, obviously, to allow the density. But again, the density that's being proposed is in line with what's allowed under state law through the comp permit mechanism. So that's, that's option one. The sheet five of the plan set is entitled manufactured home. This is a completely different type of proposal that you're starting to see in town. The manufactured home proposal comes in a little bit different. You've got a section in your zoning ordinance that applies to manufactured elderly home or age-restricted communities, 55-plus. We have done our best to adhere to, I think it's Section 16 of your regulations, there's a 100-foot buffer requirement. Each pad site is required to have at least 6,000 square feet, two parking spaces. So again, this is very high-level conceptual. This is not set in stone. Manufactured homes come in a number of sizes. That still needs to be flushed out. But this proposal in front of you does expand across Lot 105 in different sections. It would be far less density than what is proposed under the traditional, or excuse me, option one that I just set forth in front of you. This proposal on sheet five has approximately 103 manufactured home sites. They would also come in as a comprehensive permit application, so 25% of these sites would be deed-restricted also to low and moderate income housing in accordance with state law. Again, that would require a letter of eligibility from Rhode Island Housing. I have spoken to a number of entities or representatives at Rhode Island Housing, as well as some of the monitoring agents that have handled L M I comp permit applications in connection with manufactured home sites. So it certainly is eligible and has been done, most recently in Gloucester. I know there was a privately owned development that was done as a comp permit, so it's, it's nothing new, non-traditional. But again, it's far less dense than option one at 103 sites. Could have more or less, depending on wetland calculation. Could have more or less, depending on wetland calculations and further engineering, obviously, but you would still get 25% for low and moderate income housing. There are certain requirements in your local ordinance that require clubhouse, amenity space, 10% of the open space. Again, these are things that we need to flush out in a more comprehensive permitting set. But what you have in front of you represents best-case effort to comply with Section 16 of your ordinance and reduce the request for waivers, but this would certainly require some waivers from your local regulations. At the time this plan was originally developed, the manufactured home elderly communities were allowed in R30, R60 in the highway commercial zone, which a portion of this parcel was front on. The table of uses was changed, I think a month ago, maybe two months ago, to only allow it in the highway commercial zone. I mention that only because the text section of Section 16, that's applicable to this type of development, still has language that says it's allowed in the R30, R60, and HC zone. Regardless, we will still need a waiver from that. I just thought it was worth mentioning. Again, whether or not there are additional waivers needed from those regulations will depend on further engineering and site planning. There is a sewer stub just north on Fish Road, so there is sewer availability. Water, as we all know, is a topic of discussion. We have StanTech evaluating the hydrology on site. I understand from, you know, meetings in town and other projects, that par engineering is far along in its hydrology studies with Stonebridge and North Tiverton, so we'll continue to evaluate that. Obviously, this project would be subject to water availability and sewer availability. So we would anticipate providing that, that data at a formal development stage. So again, this is high-level. This is very conceptual. We really would appreciate any feedback and guidance from this board, you know, on a preferable option. Obviously, one contains more density, more affordable housing. One is less dense. It's a manufactured home site proposal. You do have an ordinance that regulates that. The applicant, again, is just looking for some guidance before we proceed with the formal development, and any feedback that we can get from you, Ms. Sweet, and the board would be greatly appreciated. Tony is here to answer any technical questions, but again, this is very conceptual, so be happy to answer any questions that the board might have. That's it. We're here to listen and garner any feedback that we can.
Sure. I'll start and then sort of open it up. You want to sit down? All right. So, concept one, is there age restriction with that or no age restriction?
Not, not with concept one. Only concept two, under your ordinance, the manufactured home, age-restricted community has a restriction, but option one would not, not be restricted.
Okay. And just before I give some additional feedback on concept two, if I'm reading this correctly, is this a secondary sort of entrance/exit on, let's give it the south side of the plan? That's more towards the bridge?
Is this over here?
Due south or, or west? I don't know. I think there's like a, like a...
There would be access off that frontage road up against 24 that had that service road.
Yes, exactly.
We're also floating the idea of a potential bridge crossing across that...
Well, that was going to be my next question.
Just to make it all sort of connectivity to the rest of the site and sort of make it more inclusive as one whole campus that was banded about as well. So that's, that's in the plan, sort of very conceptually at this stage, obviously, but that is being considered.
So, at this point, I'll probably have more feedback as the conversation goes on. My, my first two concerns are water, first and foremost, because as everyone knows, this is a hotbed of development across the board, right? It's go further up Fish, Fall River, down to the hollow that sort of stuff. So that's very top of mind here, and we're going to need to tread carefully there and figure out how this, and this is always a challenge, because we look at these proposals in isolation, but it's really, really important that we're considering the aggregate here along with everything else. So number one is water. Number two is traffic. Because if we're adding 100 some odd to over 200 units here, and we're talking into two vehicles each, and most of those are going to come out Fish Road, that's just, it's going to get really crazy over there with some of the other proposed developments in town, both residential and commercial. And I know the town is working with RIDOT due to some of the other applications that are before the town to sort of look at that entire, or roadway over there, that interface. But for me, like, this is just, that is going to be very challenging to navigate. So, I mean, those are my, obviously, if we're talking about concept two, like, the whole notion of manufactured home, aesthetics of that, like, that brings up a lot of questions from folks. You know, I don't think we, yeah, I would say that. And then my only other comment on concept number one is the height of those buildings and whether, I mean, we would need a, we would need a variance on that. I think we'd obviously want public safety officials to weigh on that, while appropriate process. But at a macro level, those are my sort of concerns here. Obviously, treading across all of this wetland space, very challenging, and it would be interesting to see how you all solve for that from a perspective. Other members of the board, for staff?
I would certainly agree with all of those concerns. I do know that land, it was once a path around by night, and every number of years, I've gone wandering around there. It's, it's very, very difficult terrain. It's very steep inside, and there's a lot of rock, outcroppings, and just wondering about how much blasting would be necessary to get to get your road in and get your buildings in. So that, that would be concerning, because there are a lot of pay-per-views, and you have very nice neighborhoods immediately flooding that land. So that's what we can add to.
Any initial response to that?
I don't have anything. We haven't done any formal test pitting or any evaluation from that regard, but we definitely agree that the terrain is, is really challenging, and we'd have to evaluate all that during the engineering process. So I don't disagree with anything that's been said.
We would probably request a site visit at a certain point in time, as a future investment idea would be like, because I think the board really does want to see this terrain.
I too have concerns about the terrain and have walked this parcel many times with other proposals. I would appreciate something that's more eligible. My eyes are going, so the narrative's difficult to read. This is all I got. There would be no school-aged children in the option two. I mean, if it's age-restricted with the way the MHEC article is, so that could be taken off if you're going that way, Matt. No children in the manufactured homes ordinance.
Oh, I'm sorry. Hold on.
Yeah.
Okay. On, on concept one, those, those four-story, the 51-unit, four-story building, like, how many bedrooms are we talking about?
It's a mix of one and two bedrooms. I think it was split pretty much evenly, I believe, what the original concept was.
So in that one, there's the potential for school-aged children, and we'd need to think about sort of how buses are getting in and out of there. We've talked about that with other developments in town, and that would be important consideration. Because I don't think they're going to walk to the corner on that. Cheryl?
You already asked most of my questions, but I just wanted to confirm what the access points would be from Fish Road. We also have the business park not far from there, and when events let out, there's a lot of competing traffic, so I'd like that taken into consideration as well. I mean, it's a one-lane road on Fish Road that all of this would be going through. Also, the movement of traffic within the development, especially for the second option, how would it flow from the first section to the second to the third? You know, how many vehicles do you estimate exiting on each way? And then we want to make sure all of our fire trucks can get through, especially with the engine that's over here, if there's any inclines.
Yeah, the, the majority of the traffic, we expect would go out Fish Road, obviously. We would try to reuse any existing crossings through those wetland complexes. That's going to be an important matter with DEM. So to the extent that we can reuse those crossings, we will. And as far as the access onto Fish Road, we'll work closely with the town and with the DOT, make sure that it's adequate and safe for all of the traffic that will be coming to it from the site.
There is a smaller, I'm just kidding. There is a smaller lot, I think you would probably put it into your configuration to the south. I'm not sure where the lot lines are on this.
Yeah, they're difficult to see on, on top of the aerial mapping, but they are, they are there. Right now, the proposal does not cross that, that smaller lot.
Okay. So you, you would probably use the original entrance to the park?
Yeah, I think that's, we haven't nailed that down yet, but that's the current concept, but, but yeah.
You haven't walked the property?
I have a couple of questions. Another one on the modular homes. You see that, is, are they going to buy the land, or is it going to be leased, or are you looking at rent?
That's a good question. So we're still evaluating that. You know, I think generally, they operate, there's a management operation, there is, there are ground leases that are part of the consideration, and that's typically how they're run. You know, there's fees associated with that. It's run internally, there's certain restrictions that your local regulations also include. I think the real specifics of that haven't been fleshed out yet, but I think it would be consistent with how most manufactured home parks operate, would be a ground lease for these sites.
It seems like the, that's a quick plot, a couple of times, the state couldn't do manufactured homes for the town, all MI, because they didn't own the land.
Yeah, so...
They were on long-term leases.
So I, I've flushed this out with Melina Lodge at the state level. She's an affordable housing advocate, and we had a number of conversations with legislature, with the legislature about this. There's some recent Tiverton-specific legislation that was part of the last housing package that didn't go forward. The Comprehensive Permit Act, the Low and Mod Act, is completely separate and independent from any requirements for counting manufactured home sites as part of the LMI calculation. That was a question I had as well. In order for you to get a half-unit count for manufactured home sites, the property needs to be, the owners need to own the land or the community in order to get those half-units. We haven't flushed that out with this project yet, but it is entirely possible and plausible to have this as a deed-restricted, 25% of the sites comply with the comp permit statute, and the town wouldn't get the half-unit counts because it's privately-owned. That's entirely permissible under the law. So the specifics of that, obviously, we would need to designate that as part of a submission and present that to the town. But those are two mutually exclusive statutes, one which gives you the benefit of the half-units, the other that doesn't. And I'm not sure we've addressed all of that yet internally, but it's something we'll consider.
The other thing, traffic.
Traffic.
And there's hundreds, when they do the state finals, hundreds, hundreds of parks. And all the development on Souza Road, there's going to be a nightmare. Right now, traffic backs up on Fish Road down at Bulgum, especially in commute time.
Yeah, and, and as part of this development, I mean, we almost always have a traffic expert that will come in and opine on that and, you know, and consider the impacts of other developments, and that will certainly be part of the analysis. It's concerning both for our client and, and obviously, the town. So those are things that we'll have to present.
Have you ever read a traffic study that it was going to have an impact on the community?
I have, actually. I, I have. I have. It depends what side of the argument you're on, but, no, it's, it's all generally accepted data. It comes from, you know, the, the same traffic data and the studies that all these experts use. That's way outside my pay grade, so I leave it to the professionals to determine whether or not that will have an impact, but we can certainly present the data and make our case.
I'd like to add to some of the things that were already said. I mean, the, the water, I mean, that's Stonebridge Water District, and we have our challenges there. I live in Stonebridge. If you don't have a proper exit on the east side of that, it looks like, oh, sorry, the south end of that, it looks like we're going to have three water crossings, or maybe even cover, cutting through a buffer zone. So it looks like there's three specific areas where you'll have to cross either a buffer zone or a water. So that, that makes it big. For concept one, is the traffic, 251 units LMI, and that's going to bring a lot of students. We just closed a local school. And we're talking, could be upwards of over 100 or more students, probably more, if you're thinking of your typical 1.2 students per house or something, depending on who's renting the places. I mean, we don't need a $200 million bond thrown on Tiverton to build another school because we closed one.
Yeah.
Yeah. So, the water, the students, the traffic's brutal there already, and especially in Bulgum Marsh, when you're coming out at rush hour, you just go down there, you sit there for like 10 minutes, and the three lights go by. And, no, that's it, really.
Okay.
Thank you.
And this, I know, I know a lot of folks get concerned about the impact to schools. I always try to use that as a good reminder that that is, falls outside of the purview of this planning board. We have tried to communication with our school administration to make them aware of these proposed developments that are coming to town, so they at least have awareness and can, whatever need they have, factor that in deliberations there. My only other comment here is on sort of the density bonus in the, excuse me, LMI. 25% is the sweet spot, but this always creates a math challenge for the town, because the denominator continues to increase while we chip away at the numerator part of this. So would encourage you to consider greater than 25% LMI, because otherwise, the goal, the proverbial goalpost key getting moved for the town, while we are very cognizant of and are concerned about matters of affordable housing, our ability to achieve a 10% goal is that goalpost continues to move. So to the extent that can consider more than 25% LMI, that would certainly appreciate.
And to that point, I immediately started thinking along the same lines as Dick, that, that those, as manufactured home units, if that it is on land that is owned by the association, that we'd get half-credit for those units. And so I just, again, encourage you to consider ways that this can be mutually beneficial to the town and the applicant. We just keep seeing comprehensive permits that are not and are detrimental to the town and their ability to meet 10%. I think the manufactured home situation offers a unique opportunity where if we got to count half of those, we're getting 50% as opposed to 25, which certainly makes an application more valuable to the town, because that actually helps us achieve a goal, whereas 25... Whereas 25, when we're hitting 25%, quite honestly, we're never, ever getting them. Nobody is at 25%. It's really only beneficial to the applicant and it does not get the town to the place that it needs to be, so.
Ashley, do you have any other?
I mean, I think you guys have covered a lot of it. I think the bottom line is that the concerns that you're raising, specifically things about, you know, school impacts and service impacts, unfortunately, the General Assembly has taken away your ability to actually consider those in a decision, which is unfortunate for the communities, but that's the, that's the reality we're living with. Certainly seeing multiple wetland crossings is not ideal, but doesn't necessarily fall within your purview. And if D E M is going to permit something like that, there's not a whole lot you can do there except express a concern that you'd rather not see that. It's frustrating to continue to see two alternative applications where the town is being forced to, you know, accept the lesser of two evils kind of situation. You're looking at a situation where you're talking about 200 plus units in buildings that clearly, you know, are larger than anything remotely close to this and are sort of out of context with neighborhood. But thankfully, we minimize the impact. We don't spread those across the entire lot. And so that part of it feels better. And then the alternative being when we do spread it across the entire lot and impact everything, you get the benefit of, you know, age restricted. So it's just, I'm just making a general observation that it just continues to be an unfortunate situation where the towns are faced with choices that ultimately, at the end of the day, are going to be difficult to manage long term.
I would agree with that and I juxtapose that against, you know, sheet number three. Sort of like if you approached that in formal. Okay. Any other board comments?
Considerly are you considering going master plan? How that you're allowed to again?
Yeah, I mean, in my experience, it makes a lot of sense to do master plan because it's a lot less time and money involved. Yeah, no, I would think master plan is preferable for everybody, you know, at a conceptual level, but more detailed than, than this type of concept plan. So I would anticipate some type of a master plan submission.
Considering conservation developments, warning ordinance and some regulations.
We're reviewing everything that would be applicable to this project. And obviously, depending on what concept it lands on, what the final design looks like, we would have a list of waivers that we'd have to check off. And, you know, and I'll, and I'll reach out to the staff and Miss Sweet, you know, to have a, maybe a pre-submission conference, you know, to go over some of those things.
I'll just make the request when next time we get digital plans, can you improve the quality? I rely on digital plans and I can't read these. The number, they're fuzzy. So please.
Kind of balance that with the size of the file, but we'll definitely.
I will, yeah. If we have to do it on a thumb drive or whatever, because I rely solely on digital plans and there's a lot of stuff on here that I can't read these numbers, so I'd appreciate it.
Anything else? All right.
I really appreciate your feedback. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Sorry, sorry, hang on, hang on, hang on. Very, very quickly, this is not a public hearing, but we'll be courteous here. Are there any comments or questions from the audience? Can we? We just, for the record, I think it would be helpful if folks came to the front table so that we could hear.
Name, address.
Bob Martin Hilton Street. I have a concern with the sewer line that's going down Souza Road. Will it be able to accommodate these additional dwellings along with the ones that are currently being done? I mean, that line was put in there just for the industrial park, even though the town doesn't own it. But it's still a concern. And I think you guys have addressed my other concerns with the water. Have we got the capability of providing it? And my biggest concern is the schools because you know how much that's going to cost. But I can see a new school coming down the line.
Yeah, and thank you for that. I was just going to comment just for the benefit of the audience here that Tiverton wastewater district would.
John Valacourt, 41 Room Rock. I'm one of the neighborhoods that's like adjacent to this and we live on a cul-de-sac in our neighborhood. It concerns me that I'm hearing that there's possibility of breaking through to another exit. See, I mean, if you think about it, you get, you know, Beechtree Hill and then you got control farms. They connect from Fish Road all the way to Main. Now we're going to break in again, so and then I lose my cul-de-sac and there's six of us in our neighborhood. And that's why I'm unconcerned. The other question I have for the board also is fire apparatus on a fourth deck. Or do we even have fire apparatus that could support that?
Yes.
Okay, I'm just, I just was thinking, I'm over here sitting thinking like, we don't have how stuff fourth deck is normally. You know, the biggest we have is three, like a tenement house. But that's our concern. Again, some of my neighbors couldn't be here tonight, so I'm the smiling face. But anyways, we've been the homeowners in Tiverton since 1989. We built the house in 2003 and it's, that's where we live. So that's the concern we have is we're going to lose our cul-de-sac and, you know. So I just want to bring that up.
Thank you.
Hi, Nancy Hallman, 39 West Ridge. I believe I'm probably one of the abutters. I live on the opposite side of the gully that goes from West Ridge Drive all the way to Route 24. And the concern about the ledge, I live on a ledge. When there was a earthquake in Dartmouth a few years back, I fell out of bed because of the connection. If there's all that blasting for, I don't know if they're going to have basements in these buildings or not. I would like to see a plan. I know there was something on Tiverton Happenings on Facebook and that's how I heard about this meeting. I figured that, you know, Tiverton needs to have more information about what's going on and more access to people that live in the neighborhoods surrounding this proposal. You know, I know everybody needs a place to live, but sometimes it's not the way, the way this is being presented. And, you know, these gentlemen certainly had, you know, they're very articulate. I don't think they had a lot of information to give us that was going to be worthwhile.
Part of the process, this is a concept plan review. So this is, this is standard part of the process. It's very conceptual, obviously, and this is why. If this proceeds, it will get into a regimented stage gate based review process where all of that immense amount of detail will be made available and will be deliberated by this board. It will result in formal communication to abutters. This is just a concept plan. It does not require formal notification.
Is there any way that the public can get some of this information a little bit more tangible?
This is all available through our planning department at Town Hall. You can call Ed Rotella, who's over there. He's our land use clerk and all of this information can be shared.
Okay, is it, is it able to be, you know, printed out or whatever? I'm a visual person, so hearing a lot of stuff kind of goes over my head. I need to see it.
I'll, yeah, so I'm getting the nod from Ed.
Yeah, okay, great. All right, thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else?
Al Marad, Captain Circle, just a very minor consideration they might want to add to their list is child safety. If you're going to have a lot of children playing around on a ledge, do the top, up, yeah, you know what I mean? Up there, perhaps they're going to need some fencing to keep the children from falling off the ledge.
That is perhaps a consideration. We won't know more until the detailed engineering comes back. But we, this board is extremely mindful of public safety in all of its forms for everyone of all ages. And we would likely.
I just envision a lot of children playing in the yards above the ledge areas.
Thank you.
How you doing? Robert Jovan, Stafford Road. Just a couple of comments. This has nothing to do with feelings. The law is the law and a state should shove this down our throats as far as a town goes. But a few facts that I think in a preliminary hearing should be heard. First is water. What are they going to do with water? Will that be potable water? Will it be wells? It's going to impact certainly the town, the ability to provide that water. Sewerage is another issue, you know, gentleman just, just mentioned. Traffic, traffic is going to be a huge problem. I think the town is looking at a public safety complex in the near future, possibly building that with police station is maybe off to the side. The traffic's going to have a major impact on that. Getting the emergency apparatus out of those stations, either police or fire. Unless the town wants to enlarge Fish Road. So that leads to other issues. Okay, you have wetland issues close to Fish Road. You have access, you have the bridge that becomes a problem to get that apparatus in and out of there. As far as if you're moving apparatus out of the public safety complex in the future, it could be 10 years, could be 15 years. The traffic is backed up. You're impacting the safety and health of every resident in town because those rescues aren't responding in a timely manner where they're needed. Plus, you're tying them up for a longer period during their runs, their transports and that type of thing. The bigger buildings that we're talking about, the town is not equipped. It has one ladder truck and it's crossed man. Many times it does not go out because they're out on rescue jobs or other jobs. So it's going to have a direct impact onto the fire department. I think maybe the chief should come in, give you some background on that and what this, what the town is going to require as far as increased firefighting. I know in the last month, the fire department had record high responses. And it's almost like a high stick since the beginning of the year. And that directly impacts the safety of all residents in the town of Tiverton. Last but not least, height of the buildings. I can give you a dissertation on firefighting. I'm not going to do that. But it increases the amount of manpower required to attack a building fire with that. And from what I hear, the land may be a challenge. So now you're talking multiple ladder trucks, one access into that area, I would not think is sufficient. You would have multiple ways. Otherwise, you're going to create dead spaces, dead ends where apparatus cannot move through the area. You're going to delay responses into that area also. So I just want to give you preliminary ideas on that. Thank you.
Thank you for your input. Appreciate it.
Oh, thank you.
Anybody else from the public here? All right. Thank you. Are we good? All right. Thank you. Are you all set? Okay, thank you. Let's move on. Give it a second for folks to shuffle out here. All right, we're going to move on to agenda item number nine. So this is the additional advisory points to the town council regarding amending the zoning ordinance to include a construction and demolition recycling use in the P D P zone. Discussion and possible vote on this recommendation. So I know there are a lot of people here for this. I want to be sort of clear on things as we head into this agenda item. This is not a public hearing. You do not have to open it up for comment. This board is very well aware of the testimony that had been given by members of the public and others across two planning board meetings and then the town council meeting back in late July. We are extremely cognizant of the concerns raised by the town. Now that being said, what I am proposing and this board will deliberate tonight as to whether or not we move forward with it is sending a new letter to the town council that, and I will read the letter so that folks have it, are aware of it and it's out there for the public. But in large part, to summarize, there were additional dimensions of this discussion and debate that came about at the town council meeting in late July. That gave many on this planning board pause and the need to take a fresh step back and sort of reconsider things. Now, we are not going to take a new vote on this. We are going to, if passed, submit this letter to the town council, which strongly encourages them to take that collective pause, which I know the town council is going to be very thoughtful in their deliberation as to whether or not to allow this to be added to the table, which is a requirement for the purchase and sale agreement for this particular property. I know they will give it the required due attention. But we feel it incumbent upon this board to reiterate some of the additional concerns that have been raised and encourage our town council colleagues to factor those, potentially factor those in to their deliberative. So that is the impetus for the letter. Now with that, I will read the letter. It's only a couple of pages and I'll try to be quick here, but I think it's important. So the letter would go to the town council, the town administrator and the town clerk. It would be from myself as chair of the planning board. And it's regarding additional advisory points regarding construction and demolition recycling use in the P D P. The letter reads as follows. On June 5th, 2025, the Tiverton Planning Board provided the town council with an advisory opinion on zoning ordinance amendments, zoning ordinance amendments related to the P D P, Articles 2, 4, Section 13 and 16, Section 5, specifically tied to a potential construction and demolition facility. Because you referred the draft ordinance to the planning board, the board's role, both by statute and ordinance, was limited in scope and time. These limitations act default of no one unnecessarily circumscribe the board's ability to fully appreciate all aspects of this unique proposed use, the real and perceived dangers associated with this use and the breadth or lack of regulatory controls. This advisory opinion was the result of two meetings worth of discussion and testimony from an array of stakeholders. At the time, the positive advisory opinion was the result of a four to three vote of the planning board. Put another way, the support for enabling a C and D facility in the P D P was not unanimous. And although the majority of the board felt at the time that the parameters put forth in the recommendation to control for and mitigate potential environmental and public safety concerns, such as making it permitted only through special use and crafting an array of specific and objective criteria to evaluate and manage the potential use. The concerns for the potential overall impact on the welfare of the town were present. Subsequent, the town council took up the matter at its July 14th, 2025 meeting. At this session, there was even greater testimony from the public. And while some of that testimony echoed that which the planning board heard and considered, there were components of the testimony that brought to light new dimensions of the debate that the planning board had not known about or considered as part of its deliberations. As a result of this new information, and coupled with its initial concerns about the use, the planning board believes it is in the absolute best interest of the town that as a community, we pause further and allow for additional expert testimony to be heard so that the town council can make the best decision as to whether to allow this use in the proposed zone. And if so, that the proper controls are in place. Ultimately, we think it is imperative that the town consider what could be the highest and best use of the land within the P D P zone while protecting the community across multiple dimensions. We recommend that the town council solicit input, additional input across these dimensions and from these entities. Number one, public health impacts. A clinically oriented opinion from the Rhode Island Department. A clinically oriented opinion from the Rhode Island Department of Health, the Rhode Island Department of Environmental Management, or other qualified experts focused on the potential public health impacts of this, of C and D facility operations on the surrounding population. This would include opinions regarding noise, odor, and air emissions, as well as best practices and mitigation. Number two, drinking water impacts. A specific impact opinion from Stonebridge Water Authority on the potential for irreparable harm to Stafford Pond, the town's only municipal reservoir. Additionally, an impact opinion from the North Tiburon Water Authority on the potential impact of this use on its ability to provide potable water. Further, or alternatively, an expert opinion regarding the potential dangers of this use on the public water systems and groundwater, which opinion shall provide best practices to mitigate the potential for any impact. Number three, conservation commission. A holistic impact opinion given the proximity of the PDP zone to critical natural resources. Number four, municipal capacity and technical expertise. While the specific and objective criteria put forth by the planning board confers the town with certain enforcement levers above and beyond what is required and handled by Rhode Island Department of Environmental Management, practically speaking, what is the town's capacity to do so? Further, do we have the staff with the technical expertise to execute the proposed monitoring and enforcement? Point five, Tiburon tax assessment. Formal tax revenue assessment to evaluate the long-term fiscal value and benefit to the town, comparing a proposed C and D use to potential other uses allowed in the PDP zone. What are we on? One, two, three, four, five, six. Broader real estate values. What would be the impact to nearby residential and commercial real estate values if a C and D facility were to operate in the PDP zone? Expert opinions from realtors or other real estate trade groups should be sought. Seven, impacts to existing and proposed businesses in the business park. What are the opinions of other business owners in the park with regards to the potential negative impacts of having a C and D facility operating nearby, such as traffic, noise, and smells? In conclusion, the planning board strongly recommends that the town council take the adequate time and energy to thoroughly evaluate these additional dimensions before rendering a decision on whether to allow a C and D recycling facility used in the PDP zone. If the planning board can be of any additional assistance with this, please do not hesitate to reach out. End of letter. So that is the letter that has been drafted. I will be seeking a vote of this board as to whether or not to send that to the town council and town administrator and town clerk tomorrow. So with that, I will open it up to board discussion. Comments, questions? Yes, sorry, Cheryl.
Just curious, the advantages or disadvantages of doing a letter versus having another vote and having a potential change in votes to the town council?
Sure. I mean, I'll start this if you want to sort of add to it. I think that was, I had a conversation with Todd about that. That was a consideration. My concern is that it sets a precedent for our ability to unwind other votes in the future that frankly dilute the ability of the board to render a decision and stick by it. I certainly welcome other opinion here, not just my own, but.
To Robert's rules, you cannot recall that vote at this time. The board has already, has already voted on it, and action has been taken by sending that opinion to the town council, which itself has acted on your opinion by fencing its public hearings, as I should have said.
I'd just like to say that, that I have rethought my position on this matter in consequence of the public hearing at the town council and some of the testimony that was given there. And, but I agree with Bill that the way to approach this is to simply and honestly and frankly tell the town council that some of us who supported the recommendation are now having second thoughts, and that we, we think that more consideration should go into this. And, and I apologize that we didn't do more due diligence ourselves. But, but I completely support the letter and think it should be sent out.
Yeah, and, and I would, I'm sorry, to others. I, I would say, I, I do apologize. I think if I had to do it again, these additional considerations would have been important to pull in. Now, we were trying to move against a certain bit of timing on this, and that sort of constrained us a little bit here. But I think, given the potential here and the rightful sort of concerns raised by many a town person here, I think it is within the best interest of the town to do the absolute best due diligence here to ensure this is the highest and best use of this land and balances it against the concerns around public health and safety. So can't undo, can't unring that bell, but we can take steps to collaborate with our town council partners in order to encourage even more due diligence. Any other? All right.
Yes.
Rosemary has.
I would just like to say I would consider reconsideration, even though Mr. Solicitor disagrees. But this is the first meeting we've had since, and it's always, I don't think it would set a precedent. I think it would, I think people were pushed into this. We were supposed to get more information from the first meeting, and at the second meeting, we didn't get it. We were making changes on the spot. I went to the meeting, and Bill was there, and a few other people were there. I heard things, as he says, the letter is excellent. However, I still think, all I kept hearing was the planning board approved. The planning board approved. Nobody mentioned our vote. And I think, you know, we were just pushed into this without enough information at ours. We didn't even get a, a letter from Stonebridge. I mean, there were things missing. I didn't know there was a purchase and sale agreement in place. I mean, it was just push. I have no agenda. I mean, I don't know the personalities, but that's my feeling. I see, I know I'm in the minority, but thank you.
Strongly advised against, against Robert's rules. What Mr. Burley is proposing here is a fantastic solution around. Yeah.
I, I just hope that it isn't put into the, they call it the consent agenda, his correspondence, that it is brought up at the meeting. That's my fear.
Sir, Robert's rule. Robert's rules doesn't allow for reconsideration of a vote on action. It's a secondary.
Okay.
But, but I, but just to respond to Rosemary, you know, if we, if the decision had been made to go ahead and have another vote, I would vote against. And that was a swing vote. So it was, it was three to four, and it would have, you know, so. But having said that, I think that not only the best solution, but the only real sensible solution is to go with Bill's letter, which is a very good letter, and, and is very reasonable. So, so I would like to make a motion to approve Bill's letter and to authorize Bill to get that out to town council or staff to get that out to town council tomorrow.
Is there a second? Uh, yeah, yeah, absolutely.
Correctment of some power.
Yeah, hang on, hang on. Well, Wood's drawing. Go ahead.
Just a, a quick note. So you said you, you were at the meeting, the town council meeting. I was not present there. But what were some of the findings that you found or that you said changed your mind, or changed the board's mind or your mind to write this letter? What are some of the findings that you said were different at the town council meeting and the planning board meeting?
Yeah, I think there are a couple of things that, that come to mind. I think first and foremost, there was some testimony from some folks in the public. Gentleman here, former fire chief battalion out of East Providence, that gave really great testimony. There was additional testimony from a variety of folks talking about the potential for pow material, if exposed to the right elements, can produce certain noxious smells that could be pervasive. That was, I'm only speaking for myself. Other people who were at that meeting should, or have watched that video, should step in. I think some of the commentary regarding the tax revenue compared to other potential uses in the park was a bit eye-opening from a fiscal perspective. I think, again, notions of the reality of the town to be able to take steps to monitor and enforce things above and beyond by them is also just, at the end of the day, a really practical consideration. And then, you know, finally, for me, well, yeah, I'll leave it there for now. And I think, what's, I'm sorry, just one other thing, counselor, is that the, the discussion for me made me realize that we did not, as a planning board, go after what I will call expert opinion or testimony from, let's say, Stonebridge as, as sort of owners and monitors of our own, our public water source there. We didn't gather any input on that from them. We didn't gather any input from the conservation commission or other entities that I think in hindsight would have helped round out our deliberations, and frankly, could have resulted in a different advisory.
So I, I mean, I 100% agree with your letter, and I think it is time to just ease it back a little bit. But I think our decisions all need to be made on expert, like you're saying, expert, not just what the public is saying.
Completely.
Not just saying that this is a toxic, whatever it is. It's, we need expert testimony, not just, I understand the concerns of the residents. But my decision will be made on, on anything. It has to be expert testimony, not just hearsay. I, I have been doing a lot of research on this whole situation, too.
Yeah.
There are good points, there are bad points. It's, it's not all bad. But at the same time, if we're going to take testimony, it must be from experts, not just upset neighborhoods or upset people, you know.
Completely.
Half truths.
Yeah.
So I, I'm willing to accept that letter as, you know, I'm, I think it's a great idea. And I, I think we should be taking a step back and slowing it down. So I, I agree with you.
Thank you.
I just wanted to see what your concerns were.
Yeah, no, which is why we're calling out independent expert parties to provide definitive, science-based, fact-based testimony to the town council in order to have all of the facts.
Yes, thank you.
Yeah, I really, I'm, I don't want to rehash stuff. We are very clear on what things are. I don't think, Sally, I, I heard your testimony at the town council meeting. I just don't want to rehash things that were. We'll open it up for three minutes. I'm sorry, is the microphone on?
What do you, what do you put? Okay, 2011. A company came to this town and asked for this, the intake, two buildings. 2013, the planning board reviewed everything, as they do. People were on that, and what, bringing this guy. They said no, after expert testimony. The chief of police testified, Department of Public Works. All these, now, the interesting thing is, the core, now in 13, the zoning board review upheld their decision. We all know that was in the paper. Now, the interesting thing is, it took all those years, and as late as May, this year, in May, everything came back up. And what I liked about it was they took the expert testimony, but they also took the neighbors. We, the people, we are the people that put all of you in and vote for you and expect you to listen to us, okay? This gentleman, the fireman, came to the thing, and he gave a report. I went to the town hall, I got the report, I made a copy of it, I read it. I read all 300-some pages. We're talking about things that may happen. I was on the school committee for 16 years, and I will still represent those thousand children that are right there, right behind us. We're going to think of them. And this is not conjecture. This is not maybe. This is when what if chance to what now. All these things that happened, that this man, the testimonies with the noise, the pollution, the rotten smell, everything else. I want you to get expert testimony, but I also want you to listen to us. Please, we know what we're doing. We do our homework. Well, this is not ghost stories, which was such an insult for someone who's done such big research, and they call it ghost stories. I heard that we're stale. I'm eight years old, and I don't feel stale. And I'll fight for this town till the day I die. Thank you very much.
I don't know. I, I did not call anything a ghost story, and I think it is the impetus of the people which, frankly, made me propose this approach. Highlighting the fact, right, wrong, or indifferent, and I certainly learned a lesson here, that as a planning board, when these sort of things come up, we need to take the time to make sure we go after science-based, fact-based, expert testimony. It is now under, out of our hands, which is why we're strongly encouraging our town council colleagues to do this due diligence to make the best decision of the. Sir? Three minutes.
Okay, thank you. I'm not going to rehash all my testimony yet. And you can read it, go back and, and read it, and see it online. Couple of things about the testimony. About two weeks ago, Westport had a major fire at one of the recycling facilities. So that's exactly what I was trying to, to point out. We had that, well, that the recycling facility was a metal recyc, that, the recycling facility was a metal recycling facility. This is construction debris, which is worse, okay? We experienced many fires there, many large fires, flowed a ton of water. I, I mentioned to you about 120,000 gallons for two hours. It's massed the streams onto it. You have to pull the piles apart. It's man-intensive. There, I'm not going to go over my testimony. But one of the things I did want to touch on with you right now was you talk about expert testimony. Yes, that's perfect. But I also gave the 300-and-some-odd pages of testimony from the residents of Rumford and their experiences. And they joined to form a legal group. And I would suggest that you reach out to that legal group and allow some of that testimony in, because these are people that experienced this, okay? It's not people that were malcontents, okay? And I witnessed, personally witnessed what happened to Omega Pond during some of this. The, you know, the requirements for water to just keep the dust piles down. So there's a mixture of things. So, and my last but not least thing, DEM authorized that pond view in East Providence. Initially, DEM withdrew that and closed them down, word to the wise. And that's what happens.
Okay, so they did, they did their duty, shut them down.
After how many years? I'm not going to get into an argument with.
Guys, guys, we're just, we're going to move on. We're going to move on. Thank you. I'd like to sort of call the vote. So would you like to make that motion again?
So I'll make the.
Hang on, hang on, hang on, hang on. Mr. Nimrofsky?
Three minutes. It'll be less. Hi, my name is Mark Nimrofsky. I am the executive director of the Tiburon Wastewater District. I am not here in my official capacity tonight, and I miss it. Is it on? Is it on? Okay, sorry. I'm Mark Nemroski, I am the executive director of the Tiverton wastewater district, I am not here in my official capacity tonight, I live on Runadendron Drive. Just one brief comment on your letter, of course, I don't have it in front of me to read, I heard you mention that the, the opinion of the North Tiverton Fire District Water Department should be consulted. My understanding of the ownership of the, of the surface water resource, the reservoir, is the city of Fall River, and as far as I know, there's been no formal entreaty to them to let them know what's going on. I know that they're aware of it, and they're finding out about these things by reading public notices, so I, I beseech you to, you know, reach out to, you know, the city of Fall River and, my understanding of the ownership of the resources that Fall River owns the reservoir, so they.
Yeah, that's a, that's a great point. I will, I will amend the letter to call out the city of Fall River. Thank you.
Hi, Karen, I'm from 74 North Christopher Avenue. So I'm a visual person when it comes to, you know, all those bullet points you mentioned about different expertise. I believe you mentioned something about environmental experts, correct? So I would, I just want to confirm that you're going to have somebody with geological expertise.
So I, I am not, it is incumbent upon the town council to do so. So just to be clear, guys, we're, it is now on the town council, which is why we're trying to collect.
Well, I understand, but that, if your letter also, I would hope, would include asking for the town council to engage with somebody with geological expertise.
We can take a look at that.
Okay, because I spoke to somebody before at, at URI, in the Division of Geosciences, and I've also spoken to somebody else who is, who was formerly on a planning board for a different town, and both, you know, did say, to me, geological expertise would be helpful in such a situation, somebody with that geosciences background.
That's pretty broad. I'm no geological scientist, but I would try to better understand the angle there to try and zero in on a more specific potential expert in which to be engaged. Is there any further elaboration you can give there?
No. Again, I'm just passing on information that was said to me, so I would hope that you'd take that into consideration and what you are providing to the town council.
We'll take it under advisement.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So would you like me to make a motion again?
I think we're good, yes, Stu.
Okay, so I will, I will move to authorize Bill to send the letter as read to us tonight, with any, with any minor amendments Bill may choose to make, the town council.
We have a motion and we have a second from Cheryl, any other conversation? All right, seeing none, all those in favor? It's unanimous. All right, thank you, everyone. Stu, can I motion draw on what?
Yes.
Hydrology's groundwater?
Yes, 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 I make a motion to take the agenda out of order and move the groundwater hydrology up to the next item, and then everything else will follow.
All right, do we have a second? Cheryl, all those in favor, all those in favor of going out of order?
Yes.
Yes, okay, unanimous. Okay, all right, URI, update on University of Rhode Island groundwater study, so again, a lot of interest in town here, I'm going to ask Stu to provide an update, and then we'll discuss.
So I'd just like to remind everybody that last year, we had a temporary moratorium on subdivisions, I believe it was four or more, or over four. So we had a six-month period where subdivision applications were not being accepted, and we justified that by saying that we needed that time, we needed to buy time for the planning board and the planning department to focus on Tiverton's infrastructure, and water was a very large part of that infrastructure. And that not only included Stonebridge Fire District and North Tiverton Fire District and their, their pipe and pump and tank systems, and the water treatment facility that treats water coming out of Stafford Pond, but it also included the infrastructure of wells and, and septic in parts of Tiverton that do not have town water, piped water, or sewer. And so, so during that period of the moratorium, our former chair, Tricia Hilton, contacted Lorraine Schubert of the Nemo Program at URI Cooperative Extension Service, and the two of them approached Dr. Robert Bovin, Boving, of URI's hydrology graduate department, and Dr. Boving put together a team of three professors, and the one that we've been working with is Sony Pradenhang. And so we are now really launching that program. The town has a $72,000, roughly $72,000 contract with URI. It's a one-year contract, it began May 1st, so we're into it, and what we're trying to do right now is recruit homeowners who have wells in those areas of town that are not serviced by sewer or piped water, to offer volunteer to do, to take, to do periodic, pull water from their, from their wells on a periodic basis and hand that over to URI for testing. And so that's what we're trying to do. We have some volun, we only have a handful of volunteers, we need between 30 and 50 to have a statistically accurate sampling, and those people need to be spread pretty widely over parts of South Tiverton, south of Bulga Marsh Road, and, and a little bit in the, in the northeast of Tiverton that also is well-dependent and OWTS-dependent. So that's where we are now. We, we have crafted a letter thanks to Dr. Pradenhang, she gave us a letter that she used in Charlestown and asked us to modify and edit, and we've been doing that, wrapped it up over the weekend, so we have something to go out, and hopefully we can get, start getting that out this week. We need to, we need to get several hundred letters out in order to get the kind of volunteers that we need. So, so that is my report.
Okay, let me just acknowledge a couple of things. So let me first, let me first say that we acknowledge that there has been some confusion among the public regarding this study, right? This is net new for the planning board, it's incredibly important, we're trying to work with our URI colleagues here to execute this in as clear and concise a fashion as possible. I took the step of reaching out to our URI colleagues in consultation with Stu and Ed here to just let them know that there is confusion among the town, right? We've had a couple of public workshops, started handing kits out, we haven't officially kicked off the study. So my recommendation to the URI team, which they have accepted, is to approach this in a much more phased, project plan-based approach here, where phase one is recruitment, which we are actively in, and we are to not proceed to phase two, which is the start of the study, until we are done with phase one, which is recruitment. Now, we have some proposed dates out with our URI colleagues, they're waiting to get, or we are waiting for them to get back to us, but we anticipate working between now and the first week of September to complete the recruitment process. That will allow us to identify the 30 to 50 homeowners in the target sites where we want participation. We understand that there is interest from others outside of that target area, and we will do our best to make sure that those, we have some representation there. At the end of recruitment, those homeowners that have been selected will be formally notified, you will know that you are in the study. At that point, we will coordinate with URI to hand out test kits and give those participants the information that they need, or the equipment that they need, rather. At that point in time, we will officially start the study. I'm hoping it is sometime in the mid-September range, again, we need URI to confirm those dates, URI will then guide us for how long the selected homeowners will have to complete the, get their samples, logistically turn it in, all of that sort of stuff. But we think it's the best point, in, in order to achieve the best success for this, we have to just pull, pause, bring some greater structure, and sort of project management 101 to this thing, and that way, it's all good. We do have a fresh set of recruitment letters that are going out this week, the targeted areas, we're working on additional FAQs that help to relay some of the obvious questions that folks are bringing up, so that we can be as transparent as possible. We ask the public for patience in this, we're not experts in this, but we understand that there's a lot of interest, and we just want to do right by all stakeholders. Ed, would you add anything to that?
No, that was perfect.
All right, great. I understand there's probably some questions here, Renee, I saw your hand first. We, we can't, I'm sorry, there's problems here, sorry.
Just basically that there are.
Just hit the button one more time.
Yeah, I can do it, sorry.
Exxon.
There we go.
There are associations, like at Wynn Semit, that would be able to disseminate your information, and so many of those, you know, that would be one place that I would just go ahead and do, do that, and, and get the information out. I'm also talking about places like the Yacht Club that have, you know, 240 members, that you can put something out on, on their bulletin and get people throughout the town. So if you're having trouble with the population, those are just two suggestions for places that you could get people from throughout the town, and then you would pick from those responses, who you, who would fit your study the best, so I'm just making those suggestions.
No, that's great, let me, let me take that, let me take that and just respond that the target geographical areas in town were based on an initial assessment of GIS maps by the URI team, they then drove around town with Stu and others, there are geographic locations, neighborhoods that have been identified, we have pulled lists from town hall of approximately 200-some-odd homes in those target areas, that is wave one, right? That is wave one, we want to be very, as precise and, and prescriptive as possible in our outreach to make sure that we're going to get the most value, we'll see what the take is there, and then we round it out from there.
Sandra Van Hoff, Airwood Drive, so those of us who have already turned in water samples, those who will be thrown away and will, and maybe will be part of the bigger study, is that?
So I would, you want to, I would say, all is not for waste, right?
No, no.
But I think we want to wait until we execute this recruitment phase, and you are properly notified that you are going to be participating.
Right.
So I would frankly, if I were you, pause on any further water sampling.
Right, but I know one of the water samples that we had to turn in had to be tested within 24 hours, so that's prob, I mean, it's almost like the, our part, we're not part of South Tiverton, there was like a small little study of the big study, like, because we've already turned water in and it's already begun.
I will be clear, and Ed, you can keep me honest here, I did not have that specific conversation with anyone at the URI team. Stu, I don't know if you have, Ed, if you, have you?
So as far as I know, that those are part of the study, they are, they are actively testing those. They are also, the 24-hour was only for.
The pathogens.
Pathogens, exactly. If they didn't get to it in 24 hours, they wouldn't test for pathogens, but they could test for the other things that they were looking at. So the testing, there was, like, I think there may have been only one that didn't get within 24 hours, and that one is still able to be tested, it's just not going to get the pathogen tested.
Okay, so those of us who already turned in, we can assume that the second testing in the fall, we are part of that study, or no?
Until you get formally notified, I would not assume anything.
Even though our first ones are being tested?
Correct, because frankly, that was done out of order, if I can be brutally honest.
You know.
Yes.
You and I have been in communication.
We are email best buds.
I don't know about best buddies, but.
I appreciate the zeal with which.
It was confusing.
There is interest, and that is why I acknowledge the confusion, and that is why I've reached out to URI with a novel of an email, right? That proposed all of this, and they are very welcoming to taking this phase-based, project-management-based approach here. So I would say, whatever water samples you've turned in, all good, but I would take a time out and pause on doing any more work on your part until you are, if and when you are formally notified.
Okay.
All right?
One more question.
Sure.
There's a third part to the study that has to do with the groundwater table.
Mm-hmm.
Which you could do, you could do the first two parts, the nutrients and the pathogens, and you don't have to do the third part, because they have to open your well, put something down in your well.
Sure.
Do we know when we can sign up for that?
Ed?
They are not currently, they're not asking for those volunteers yet, they are going to follow up, once they get some more sampling, to then say, okay, we're going to offer it to X, Y, and Z.
So they, they will handpick the people whose well, okay?
Yes.
That's right, that's my understanding as well.
Yeah, we're going to leave it to the scientists to determine who amongst those who have applied and are approved for the study or have been selected for the study, where they want to do that additional sort of due diligence.
I appreciate your help.
There we go. Are we good? All right, I'd like to make a motion to move item E, Abigail Estates, up to the agenda.
Second.
So that we can get this done with, and then we can get on to other planning board issues.
Second.
Do we have a, okay, we have a second, all those in favor? All right, unanimous. Counselor?
Good evening.
So this is Abigail Estates, which is, if anyone's been following along, we've had a long and robust dialogue here, and we are getting an update on the status of town inspections and issuing an electric permit for streetlights, the status of energizing those streetlights, and a status of securing as-built plans. Counselor Akers, it's all the.
Good evening, I feel so very welcomed by the introduction, but thank you for.
I asked for you to be here, sir.
I appreciate it. So I'm going to kind of keep it brief here. First thing when it comes to the streetlights, it's my understanding. Uh, first thing when it comes to the streetlights, um, it's my understanding that the permit has been obtained and that that is in compliance. I did receive an email that was kind of vague on what the town's looking for as to the streetlights. However, I did, I did provide, um, Edward Tella with copies of the wiring plans we have. Moreover, I met with the electrical company that, um, had been working with the town, with the developer. Every wiring plan that they have, I have and I've submitted to you guys. Um, I don't have anything beyond that, and I know this is beating a dead horse, and this is, the story that I've gotten all along was that it would be National Grid that would have put together any further wiring plans. Um, and I did see some older plans from that time period when National Grid did, uh, was in control of the, uh, streetlights for the town, um, that did have National Grid plans. Now, I, I don't know what happened back when the town changed from National Grid, um, but my, uh, the electrician for my client doesn't have those, um, but I did see communications where there was back and forth providing National Grid information at that time regarding the, uh, the streetlights. Uh, that being said, one of the guys that works for Commercial Electric, he was there when they did install the, uh, the underground for the utilities, um, for the pad sites, uh, which are reflected on the plant, the wiring plans that I did provide you. Uh, the conduits are already ran to all the lights, uh, the lights are fully wired. Um, the, uh, recommendation I have from the electrician is, um, that whoever is responsible here, and maybe you can clarify that for me, from my understanding, whoever is responsible for connecting the, uh, lights to the underground would need to pull the wires from the conduit through the hand hole and connect them, but the wiring for all the light posts are done, and the conduits run from the junction boxes to the light posts. So it's just connecting A to B. That, that's what I was informed.
You need to communicate that to DPW.
Okay.
Please.
All right. I, I can, I can do that.
But it's still dark.
I, 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 I know, I understand. Um, I, I believe at this point, it's, it's out of the hands of the developer and the developer's electrician, um, but I can provide that information, of course, to DPW.
It's coordination, um, between town, developer, and National Grid or Rhode Island Electric, whatever they are saying, to get them turned on.
All right.
Who, who in that equation, because when there's, who in that equation would kick the light? I'm a big fan of single-pointing. DPW now has the light. Okay. And we have been in touch. Awesome.
All right, but I'll reach out, I'll reach out to DPW.
He actually reached out back to us, asking for additional information from the developer, which Mr. Akers has been trying to provide.
Yeah, every, everything that I have, you guys have. Um, and then as to the as-bills, I have some wonderful news. Um, one, it's, it's getting done. Inside Engineering is, is taking care of that, the developer. Uh, they've been out last week, they were out there for at least three days surveying, um, and then I decided to give them a couple of days before calling them and bothering them again, uh, to check in, so I called them today, uh, to, to see where they stand. And all the staking is done, that's complete. Um, they submitted all the information to the office to, to create the as-bills, so they're working on those now. Um, and don't hold me to it, but I, I think from my conversation today that those should be done perhaps by the end of the week, so a lot sooner than, uh, than what I had told Todd originally, but again, you know, I'd rather under-promise you and, 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 you know...
Over-deliver.
Over-deliver, there we go. Thank you.
All right.
Point of information, have the permanent bonds been installed?
Yes, I believe that's, that's been, that's been done.
Okay.
Now, now it's just reporting that information back.
When they, if they're doing their surveys, they should be.
Yes, yes, no, Inside Engineering is a, they're, they're, they're a reputable, um, engineering firm, so I'm, I'm certain that they're doing, uh, doing it properly.
Okay. Um, so I would just, if there is a way to get an update, maybe by the, in the next week as to sort of, if, I'd like to know when those as-built plans are turned in so we can cross that off the list.
Yeah, of course.
Okay.
Yeah, no, I've been, I've been...
I will say, Mr. Akers, it's been very communicating, very good about communicating that. And we appreciate that, sir. Okay. Anything else for Mr. Akers here? We good? Thank you, sir.
All right.
All right.
I'm going to ask.
Let's stop, even September.
That, that's the goal.
So let's go back to Agenda Item B, update on state legislation related to land use. Ashley?
So I gave you, uh, the statewide planning, we'll do a legislative summary. I gave you that legislative summary, which contained probably some bills that are not of interest, um, but I have a more detailed overview of bills that are of interest, and I can run through those quickly, and you can certainly stop me, um, if you have questions, and I'm going to go by House bill number because that's where these all generated originally. Um, so going in numerical order of, I think, bills that were, we have an interest in because they're going to impact what we do, um, is 5794BAA, which just means it got revised a lot, um, from its original form. This bill did a lot of things. There was, this is, this was a, just a brain dump of changes of lots of different sections of enabling legislation, but essentially, high-level overview changes, uh, the, changes a minor subdivision to essentially anything that is a frontage lot in any number of lots. So you could have 40 frontage lots, would be a minor subdivision, and would never go to the planning board. So as long as you don't create a street and you don't need any dimensional relief, um, no matter how many lots you're creating, that's now an administrative action that does not go before the planning board. Uh, it took, it also took two other bills that were previously introduced in the House and rolled it into this bill because the Senate abandoned those bills, but they got rolled into this bill, and that's the, one of those is the oversized lot subdivision, which essentially creates a new category of subdivision where if you're creating vacant lots for development, the resulting lots have to be equal to or greater than the lot area of at least 50% of the developed lots within 200 feet. This is based on a compilation plan by a land surveyor, meaning they can, they can justify their ability to subdivide outside of or smaller than what the zoning district would normally allow them if they can show that they are essentially an oversized lot within the general neighborhood. And those lots do not have to be any larger, that, or they ha, they can be as small as 3,000 square feet. So it, it doesn't base your subdivision ability on zoning, it bases your subdivision ability on what's going on around you. Um, I would consider this one relatively problematic, and I actually used a Tiverton example to explain to them why we thought this was a bad idea. This is essentially going to permit where you have these small clusters of small lots that were, in a lot of cases, originally developed as cottage properties that were not occupied year-round, um, which were, have since been converted to year-round occupancy on well-inseptic, will now, when those clusters of small lots are adjacent to much larger lots, those larger lots will now draw this 200-foot radius and say, look at all these tiny lots, more than 50% of them are tiny, so now I get to subdivide into tiny lots, despite the fact that my zoning may say that I need an acre or more, I can shrink, I can now create all these tiny lots.
It's definitely a problem.
This is a huge problem.
Because of a suitable landing area. Right, you can't just put a map.
No.
Can we?
Yes.
I have no idea.
I don't disagree.
So my question on all of these things, Ashley, that you're going to sort of, is there, what is the timeframe?
Now, yesterday. That most of them were effective upon passage, which gave municipalities zero days to amend your zoning ordinance. You immediately became non-compliant.
Okay, so then my next question is going to be, as I look at the calendar, whether or not we can afford to wait until the September meeting. Uh, how many of those do you have? And do we need to prioritize?
There are some...
Based on impact, which ones we gotta tackle first? If we're not going to do that tonight?
Yes.
But?
Yes.
We have a workshop coming up, that workshop was already dedicated to other things.
Yeah.
All of this to say, do we need to, more time?
Well, we need to do some strategizing as to how we're going to approach all of this. I, yes. Um, same, same bill, like I said, there's a whole bunch of stuff in here. Uh, pre-applications are now optional, so you cannot make an applicant go to a pre-app. Um, I can no longer certify an application incomplete on the basis that, for anything other than they just did not provide the item. So if they come in and their plan is sketched on a napkin, and they say, this is my site plan, I can't say no because I do, I no longer have the ability to say you haven't sufficiently satisfied the, the item, you have not provided enough information, or the information you provided is inaccurate. I can't say that anymore because they gave me something. They checked the box, and now they're complete, and now they're in front of you.
Don't yell at Ash.
Please don't yell at me when you get a crappy application in front of you that I normally would not have certified complete for lack of proper information. I can't do that anymore.
Ashley, I have a question?
Yes.
On that, does that mean, if, if this, if the checklist says last one survey, you still have to provide a multiple survey?
Yes. Yes. Uh, what I, what I will, I will say that I think the result of this will be is unbelievably descriptive and long checklists, because I don't know how else you fix that. Like, I want, now I want a paragraph for what the checklist item has to be so that you have to have provided that item. It can't just say a traffic study anymore because I, they could just, somebody could just write a tra, call it a traffic study.
A state traffic study from a licensed county mayor in the state of Rhode Island.
Yep, all the details are gonna...
That addresses X, Y, and Z.
Yeah. Yeah.
When do we get to?
Uh, um, it moves state permits to final. Previously, that was a preliminary, which means most of the time, you're, nobody's ever seeing the state permits. You're not going to see the state permits, the public's not going to see the state permits because final is done administratively. So the state permits are just coming to me.
So tonight Rosemary wanted to see the OW.
They would not have had to have provided that. For final only, and final is administrative by law, so you won't see it.
Which means we're not, we're not getting it as part of the...
I understand. I can make sure it's a lot.
Yeah, but now you can't ask that at preliminary, I have to ask at final, and you won't see them. Uh, it, it changes the findings of fact for administrative applications, it actually removes the finding of no significant negative environmental impacts, and the creation of lots with physical constraints to development are no longer findings of fact for applications, administratively processed applications. Um, it makes updates to the adaptive reuse provision that was in there. This one actually, I think, is a little better. Um, it does give an incentive to provide LMI units, and it does allow the municipalities to set maximum densities now, whereas previously it was like a free-for-all as to whatever you can fit under, you know, minimum housing standards. Um, you have to now permit manufactured homes as a type of single-family home. Uh, it, this is our third revision to, to substandard lots where it's now the proportional reduction is the primary approach to calculating non-conforming lot, um, dimensional standards, but it does allow the municipality at their choice to apply the setbacks of a district in which the lot would conform. So that is an improvement, I think that's better than where we are now. Uh, it, a mo, it changes what modifications, which is, if you remember, is what the zoning officer is allowed to provide administratively in terms of dimensional relief. That can now be used for lot size, which it could not before, and it's permitted along with the establishment of new lot lines, which it was not before. It also establishes neighborhood character-based modifications, and I'm still reconciling in my head how this works, but it's essentially authorized for properties that are, um, can connect to public water and sewer, it allows for dimensional relief from frontage lot with lot depth up to the average dimensions of the comparable existing built environment. It's the same idea as the oversized lot subdivision, whereas you get to basically check the neighborhood, and if they're all dimensionally non-conforming, then you can be too. Um, this is again established by a compilation plan by, with, from a land surveyor. I will say, both of those on the oversized lot subdivision and the neighborhood character modifications, we opposed the, them on their premise, but said, if you're going to do this, please do not let this be established by GIS, which was the original approach, which we know is not accurate, runs through houses, and is not a good, I mean, that was just a legal battle waiting to happen. It got better, um, it now has to be a compilation plan. Um, it allows, it also allows you to amend the comprehensive plan in excess of your four times that you're currently allowed to amend it if the amendment allows for an increase in new housing. So those don't count against your four. Um, okay, moving to the next one, 5793A, essentially a lot, I, we didn't pay a lot of attention to this, but I'm, it's, it's an interesting one that I think the town in general would be interested in, and it allows an increase over the current 4%, 4% cap based on your increase to the municipality's housing stock. So if you permitted, and I don't count me on the numbers, I'll double-check them, but I believe it's if you permitted 10 units and 10% of those units were affordable, then you can exceed the 4% cap based on those, based on housing units, and that's good for three years before you have to go back to reset. Um, 5796AA requires a municipality to allow housing types other than single-family detached structures within the urban services boundary. You have a portion of town in the northeast corner that is within the urban services boundary, um, so you will not be able to, in that area, restrict development to single-family residential detached structures. 5798AA allows attached, single-family dwellings are permitted in residential districts, you're required to permit them in residential districts, um, for the construction of two or more units, and this is essentially defined as dwelling units that are constructed either side-by-side or horizontally, um, se, separated by a party wall and a lot line. So these are required to be permitted on their own lot. The base zoning applies to the outside perimeter, but you cannot apply it interior, so these things can be, they can share a party wall and a, a lot line down the middle, you can apply the dimensional requirements on the outside, but not in the inside. You can't restrict them to less than three stories, you can't restrict the floor area ratio to less than one, you can't limit the bedrooms to less than three, and you cannot require more than one off-street parking space for a two-bedroom unit and two off-street parking spaces for a three-bedroom. Uh, 5800 requires municipalities to provide for residential development in all or some of the areas encompassing commercial districts. It doesn't get a whole lot more specific than that unless you are a municipality of 40,000 people or more, in which it then says it has to be in 30% of your commercial districts. 5801 was for the LMI Act. It does restore the master plan as optional, the option is at the developer's choice. So you can't make the developer do it, but they can do a master plan if they want to. Uh, it changes the standards for approval by essentially removing all the reasons you can deny a permit and just leaves in a list of reasons to approve. Um, the change on consistent with you, with local need now is coupled with a required finding that you've made significant progress in implementing your affordable housing plan. So if you're... So if you're gonna make a determination that something is not consistent with local need, you have to find that you've also made significant progress in implementing your affordable housing plan. What that means, I have no idea.
That seems very subjective.
It certainly is. Um, there was a change in the requirement about being compatible in scale, um, basically saying that the footprint and height of the low-to-moderate income units shall not be less than 25% of the footprint and height of the market rate units. It used to allow you to just make those decisions. Now that there's, that's the threshold for it. Um, for integration of units into the larger development, it, it, there's a, a change that says that for age-restricted units, you don't have to do that integration. There's, this is a two-part law. The first part, that everything that I just read, took effect upon passage. The second part of it is irrelevant to Tiverton now, but in the future, maybe, maybe, uh, relevant, and it, it applies to those municipalities that meet the 10%, and how, if, when they are or are not subject to comprehensive permits. It essentially says that they're subject, but the mandated density bonus requirements are not. Those are only sub, those are only required of municipalities who don't meet the 10%. That's the bad news in a nutshell.
Um, what about the one for the electric?
Oh, the permitting. Well, we have that on the agenda as another. So that is last year's law.
Okay.
That was a 2024 legislative law that all planning and zoning applications go online. Um, we're in the throes of that exercise right now. I can update you on that.
Thank you.
Yes.
For all of that, again.
I will send this to all of you.
Thank you. That would be super helpful. Again, from my perspective, our ability to determine a prioritization here for what we should zero in on for second, third, fourth, based on sort of impact to us. Maybe that impact is subjective, but you, you know what I mean? Just, again, to bring structure and form to how we react.
Yep.
Okay. Um, any questions for Ashley?
My other question is really quick, the oversized lot.
Yeah.
Ashley, if you're creating a lot, what's, uh, dimensional, um, standards do they use? If it's like, if they're an R120, but they create, let's say, a 30,000 square foot lot?
I believe it gets the proportional reduction.
Okay.
I have to double-check, but I, I believe that that's.
Practically, that's what's coming.
Yeah. You get the, whatever your lot size is to the district in which you're located, you get the proportional reduction.
All right. Do we want to move into item, uh, agenda item, uh, D here, which is Discussion Regarding Land Development and Subdivision Regulation Checklist in the context of the state requiring all applications to be submitted via an online portal?
Yeah, so we, that was, like I said, that was a 2024 law. Uh, the state handed that over to the Department of Business Regulation. The Department of Business Regulation, I was told, had a working group. Um, decisions were made at that level that they were going to use the online permitting system that is currently in place for building permits. For this, the state, there is a universal building permit software, um, that's being used for permits. They are using the same for zoning applications. They are using the same for planning applications. The Department of Business Regulation is going from community to community and meeting with each planning office to go over this. They are taking our checklists, our forms, and they are essentially building an application system within the E, I think it's E-GOV or whatever it's called, the online permitting system. Zoning is ahead of planning. Zoning is live in several communities, and the deadline is Oc, the deadline for everything is October. Um, we are now in the process of working through how to build that online application for planning, and I will tell you, after sitting in Hawkington and in Tiverton with the same, the person who's building this and having multiple conversations about this, um, the software system that was chosen is not equipped to handle a planning application. There are just, building permits and zoning applications are relatively black and white. Zoning is a thousand shades of gray. It is a if this, then that, and then that, then this, and the software is not designed for that. So we're gonna cram a square peg in a round hole. We're gonna have an online permitting system that is gonna have some limitations that are not going to allow us to emulate the real application process. So it is gonna be a steep learning curve, and we're building the plane as we're gonna fly it.
And, and I guess I go back to, I think it was five, seven, nine, four, or maybe five, seven, nine, three, A, which was the, the need to apply a greater level of specificity to those checklist items in order to avoid that sort of bad situation that you illustrated. Will we have the flexibility to customize Tiverton's version of this checklist software to be able to account for that?
So, sort of, I guess, is the answer, because the software, the way they started this, it is one giant run-on application, and it, you get a workflow on the left-hand side of your screen. And there was no separation between pre-app, master, preliminary, final. It's just this giant run-on workflow. And I explained to them that that's not reality, and that's not how the system actually works, and that if you have, the way they were, are looking at this is like, your, your application is like your, our, our application sheet that like tells you to fill in your name and your plat and lot, and your engineer, and your land surveyor, and all of that, and they think that's the application. And I've explained that it's a process application that want, it's stages of review, and each stage of review is, is iterative as you go through this process, that when you start here, it's not like everything that we asked you for in this stage of review then doesn't get asked for in the next stage or the following stage. And I asked them, what are you doing for me when it's been three years since we gave a master plan approval because they disappeared into DEM and haven't come back out? And they didn't pay their taxes, but I can't make them submit a new tax certificate because they did that at pre-app, and they were up to date. Like, so I think that was a bit of a revelation for them because they started restructuring. The, the point of putting this on your agenda, one, is to let you know that this is happening. Two, is I think it's, and I've said this, that we need to do this for a while. Now it's become relatively imperative that we pull those checklists out of your subdivision regulations because I can't, we can't change them unless you have a public hearing and three weeks of advertising. And I can't be responsive to now this new format and this new system where, and new law now, where I think we want to be able to make faster and more fluid changes to checklists in response to some of this stuff. This application is not gonna look like a checklist. You're still gonna have an app, we're still gonna have the checklist, and the applicant is gonna have to go through, check the checklist, sign the form, upload that as a document into the permitting software, and then we are gonna have to, on the administrative side, we're gonna have to use that checklist to go check all the documents that they've uploaded. So from our perspective in the office, this doesn't streamline anything. This actually is, is gonna make it a little harder for us to go through. I would like to change the checklist to be, to, so that it's, there's a requirement that if you check the box and you tell me that you've provided something, you have to tell me what document and what page.
File.
So that we don't have to go through hundreds of pages of documents looking for things. So I think we need to be more fluid and adaptable based on all of this that's happening.
Okay, so if our target timing to, um, have the public hearing would be our September meeting, would we have enough time to advertise? No, so we gotta plan for October. Okay. Okay. Well, I'm supportive of that. I mean, so, so everyone understands what we're proposing as far as the checklist is. The ordinance regulations still say a checklist shall contain at least these items, and the administrative officer and/or planner should have discretion with other items. Okay.
The checklist will still be connected to your regulations, and we've talked about how to do this, and that we, we're in the process of doing this in Hawkington, where we're adding a section into the regulations that says, for a master plan checklist, you know, A2 contains, and we give like a, a description of what that is, and then the checklist can live outside of the regulation so that we can be more adaptable to address these types of issues. Um, you know, with the understanding that, of course, if we make an administrative change to a checklist, you guys are gonna, you're gonna know about it. We're not gonna do that, you know, independent notifying board. It's just with them inside the regulations, we can't make changes unless we have a public.
Okay. Well, we have to be able to get to a point of trying to make some lemonade out of these lemons and give ourselves a fighting chance here to operate efficiently.
And I'll say, I am 100% supportive of an effort to streamline and to move things to an electronic process. What I am not supporting is the state's choice of a software system that despite the fact that they were told, is not adequate for this type of application.
Okay. So, I'm sorry, give you an example. Your ordinance regulations say any traffic study shall be required. Right, H. How Ashley phrases that in the actual online application is different. Right? That's where she comes in with precise traffic study from a licensed engineer. It contains next to it.
Mm-hmm. And unfortunately, because of the way they worded the language and the way that that language in the law is being interpreted, it, this has become like, it's one application. And I'm like, but it's not one application. Like, I can apply for a pre-app and then a master plan, and then I could disappear, and I could never come back, and I could never finish the stages of review. It's not one application. It's stepped applications within a larger review process. And it's like, well, the law says it's one application. I'm like, but that's not reality. It doesn't work like that.
One last question before I call to a vote. You mentioned October. Is it October 1 or October 30? Like?
It, I have to go back and look.
Okay.
I, I think the reality is, is they're doing their best. I mean, and I'm not criticizing DBR. They've been handed something that they don't, they don't know planning. They don't, on, so this poor gentleman who is trying to build an application for a process that like bef, before, you know, six months ago, had, he had no idea. He didn't, wasn't involved. That's not his world. So, we're trying. I think the reality is, is that some stuff will be up and running in October, and some won't. And the, I guess, saving grace of that is that there's no T for not, there's no penalty for not being up and running.
Okay.
The only potential thing that they could do to a municipality who said, I am not joining this online permitting software thing that you're doing, um, is they could withhold their share of the permits. I will say, not, I'm, I'm not necessarily suggesting this, but I will just say, Calstown opted not to use their building permit software and told the state, I don't want your fees. I like this software better. I don't wanna use what you're using, and I'm gonna use this online permitting software, and you can keep your fees. And they did not conform. There is software out there that is specifically designed to handle planning applications.
Yeah.
Why they didn't look at that, I have no idea.
I, I think the, the practical nature of this is when the rubber hits the road and people start to create noise and complain on both sides, right? Both from the applicant's perspective and then as well as sort of municipal planning, and perhaps the state will take a step back and.
Pay close attention to what happens because the 2025 legislation requires that all the state permitting go on this system. They're gonna break the system.
Yeah.
Like, I don't know how you're gonna put a DEM permit on here.
Okay. So we need to, um, move to a vote here. So I'd like to entertain a motion to approve advertising for a public hearing to amend the land development and subdivision regulations as they pertain to checklists. Your design standards.
Because we have, we have all kinds of things that we need to do. We have subdivision regulations. If we're gonna advertise, we should do, because it'll only take us two seconds to approve this.
Great.
So let's, let's see if we can package that together, things that are really high priority. We'd really like to.
We can do the design piece. You guys have been over that several times. You had it for a while. We, we can, well.
The zoning.
I know. I, my, I'm, in my opinion at this point on that is we'll just reconcile it after. We're gonna have to make changes to zoning ordinance regardless because, one, the zoning revision committee isn't done. Two, we have a bunch of legislation we're gonna have to figure out what to do with. So we can, that can be part two. I would say at this point, let's just get it into the subdivision.
I agree with that.
Okay, so what else besides those two items can we piggyback on to? Or, okay, as of October, right? We, yeah, because you, we need, we can't do this by sep, we can't properly advertise in time for our September.
So let me go back and look and see, there might be other small pieces that we can pull together before.
For your September meeting.
That you'd look at in September and then hear, have the hearing in October.
Okay. Working on it. Okay, so do we need to amend the motion to be inclusive of not only?
I think you just directed staff to get together.
Let us get together the amendments for you.
Perfect. All right, so we have a motion. Stu has seconded. Any other discussion by the board? And I apologize, my back has been to all of you this entire time. Oh, Rosemary, oh. Um, okay, uh, all those in favor? All right, unanimous. Uh, so we're going on 10 o'clock here. Um, we're gonna move to approval of minutes of June 3, 2025. Uh, Janice or Rosemary, is there anything substantive?
They would have been the June, they would have been July 1st, approved June 3.
Okay, so. So we don't have July minutes. Okay, so this is moved at this point. Okay, so we'll have to take that up at our September meeting. Okay, quickly, update from the Tiverton zoning ordinance revision committee. Gerald.
Um, we finished the animal keeping and the final draft for in-ground, low ground pools. That should be ready to be in wood. And next items, we're gonna be tackling the water shut, staff upon, non-foot, and non-bay area signage. Divided this, uh, show street area.
Okay. So can we, so are those in? Okay.
Uh, the animal keeping and the food, yes.
Yeah, yeah, that's.
Yes.
Yeah. Okay, very. You need any help? Okay. All right, thank you for that. Um, update from the North Tiverton Business Park Committee?
I can do that. Uh, so we delivered recommendations to the town council in the form of like a mini report that summarizes the whole report, which is being early formatted into, in design at the moment. Um, they, the committee sent the, the document to the town council and requested to go on a September agenda. Uh, so the full report will get submitted to the council before that meeting and also distributed, um, certainly to the planning board. But we are basically finalizing the report at the September meeting.
Okay, yeah, I have a lot of interest in that. Okay.
I can send you guys the, um, the whole mini report that was pulled together. It gives a report here with recommendations, and then when the, when the report is formatted, I would also try that.
Awesome. All right, um, with that, um, Rosemary?
This is the holiday.
Labor Day holiday. Okay. All right. Thank you, everyone. Appreciate everyone's time and input. Uh, have a great evening.